Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to begin this meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. Momentarily, we will start with our public hearings for this evening, but before we do so, we have two brief items of business to take care of, namely, the minutes from our two preceding meetings when we were unable to adopt our minutes at the last meeting. So is there a motion for action on one, or the other, or both of our October 9th and October 29th minutes? Maybe we should take them separately because of the absences involved.
I would move to approve the minutes of the October 9th meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The October 9th minutes are approved. Is there a motion on the October 29th minutes?
I would move to approve the minutes of the October 29th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
Stay.
Okay, and our October 29th minutes are approved. We are now set to begin tonight's business with our public hearings. They will be announced from the podium, and for those of in the audience who may not be familiar with our process, as each application is announced, we will ask the applicant or their representative to come forward to the podium to provide their name and address for the record, as well as a brief summary of the application. Following any questions from the commission members, we will then ask members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to do so, and then we will offer an opportunity for members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application to do that as well. And where there are comments made in opposition, we will encourage the applicant to return to the podium to address those comments made in opposition. We do have a lot of hearings scheduled for this evening, so I would just ask those who wish to speak either for or against a specific proposal to keep their comments concise and not repeat those that have preceded them because they'll already be reflected in the record. So with that, Heather, would you please introduce our first application tonight?
Evening, commission members. Mr. Kulik, the first public hearing, PR 1835. This is a project site review for new construction. This is to construct an addition onto what is known as the Amos Building at 214 West Water Street. Syracuseoma Project LLC is the owner and the applicant, and the property lies within a central business district, office and service zoning district. This proposal is on hold. We have not received all of our Seeker responses. If you recall, the last meeting, you declared yourself with intent to act as lead agency under Seeker. I did send out those letters, but we have not received any back, so we need to wait for that. And the applicant is also in ongoing discussions with respect to design with the preservation board. So if anyone is here for 214 West Water Street to speak in favor or against, I do need to announce that because it was published in the paper, but the applicant is not here and the project is not ready to move forward at this time.
And just for clarification, when the applicant is ready and all the materials are completed, it will be re-advertised as it was the first time, correct?
That's right. We are requesting it to be on your authorization list for December in anticipation that it will be ready.
So if there is anyone here to speak in favor of that application, please come Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. So no speakers this evening, but as just outlined, we anticipate this will be back on our agenda on December 10th. The same sorts of opportunities will be extended to the applicant and to the public at that time if all the materials are complete then. Okay.
Yes, so the next two public hearings are companion pieces, are 1843. This is a re-subdivision. This is a continuation from September 17th and also October 9th. This is to combine three properties into one new lot at 1202 and 1200 and a half Willis Avenue, and also 959 Emerson Avenue. Basma Musharabash is the owner and applicant, and it's industrial class A. The companion piece to that is the facade and site alterations, which is in the form of a project site review. That's PR 1832. And again, facade and site alterations to 1202 and 1200 and a half Willis Avenue, and also 959 Emerson Avenue. Basma Musharabash is the owner and applicant, and this is industrial class A zoning district as well.
The applicant is here. Please come forward.
I am the engineer for the project. I'm representing the owner and the applicant. The, excuse me, the first part of what Heather talked about, we have a parcel here, a parcel here, and we have this parcel. We're looking to combine those three parcels. This is on Willis Ave. This is Emerson back here. So they're looking to combine all three parcels into one. They have commercial over here, there's commercial across the street, there's a towing lot in the front here that belongs to the people across the street. There are two residences here. They are currently owned by Syracuse Land Bank. They're going to be up for, you know, whatever. There is an encroachment on the back area here from these two houses, but it's not presenting a problem. My client wants to take the existing building at 1200 and a half and turn the top portion, which is from Willis Ave, into a neighborhood grocery store. Okay? I want to stress that all the deliveries, entrances, everything else would be from Willis Ave. There's nothing from the back here. If you see along here, there's a, it says, existing fence and concrete wall. This right here is quite a drop-off. You wouldn't be able to go down into there, onto Emerson or anything. I knew in the past there was some questions regarding that. To comply with parking and everything else, we're going to have two handicap spots up front here, and we're going to put in more, just regular traditional parking spots, or six of them over here altogether, so there'll be eight total. Okay, this area here right now is, it's a mix. It's crushed gravel, it's stone, it's bare ground, there's some grass. It's a mix. This would be paved. This area here, we'd get a topsoil layer on top of it and grassed. To comply with the city's requirements for boundary treatment, we're going to be putting arborvit along this side on the property line. This whole area here, I've got some pictures, this whole area here is just overgrown, it's all brush, so we feel that's enough to limit having to put anything on that side. On this side, next to the house, we would be putting up a six-foot-high wood stockade fence. The only place that we have questionable, and I talked to Jeff Harrop, and he says I'm bringing it up with the board, with the commission here, back here, since there is a slight encroachment onto this area, putting any kind of fence here, this is how these people come out. And the ones that would live there, they would frequently come out and walk over here and just walk out the street. If there was any kind of a emergency situation, namely a fire or anything else, we're concerned about putting a fence right near there, how that might limit their access. And Jeff said that might be an acceptable concern, and to be, have it waived, just to not do it. But we'll leave that up there. Like I said, just doing the top portion, which is from here up, that's it. The curb cut that exists goes from here to here. It is shared by, it's mostly on our property here, on the applicant's property, but the guy that does the KC, the auto parking lot, he pulls in, backs in, drops cars from his wreckers, and then he pulls out. So this isn't established. Willis Ave was done, my understanding from the neighbors, about two years ago, total reconstruction, and that's when the curbing was put in, where it's put in. And also, at that time, this area here was paved then by the city. I guess that was grass or whatever, you know, stones and grass. And the city opted, I guess, at that time to pave up to, pretty well up there. If you go out there, you'll see, you can tell where there's a seam where pavement starts and stops. It is a continuous pavement all the way up to the corner. So one of the questions was about the applicant digging this up and putting grass there. It was just paved over like two years ago, so our question would be, why would we do that? So anyway, that's that. The interior of the store is going to be, like I said, a typical neighborhood grocery store entrance here. It's going to be like a deli area over here. There's not going to be any food prepared and sold out of there, but it's going to be a deli to buy cold cuts and stuff. Just racking, some fruit stands, and a storage room back here, and then we have a cooler over on this side. And that's basically it. This portion has gone through, or is going through, for a building permit, and I just did a submission the other day to the department, Brian Thompson, and we basically have everything addressed that he wanted addressed on there, but I wanted to show the board what it was. And that's basically an overview of the project. So once again, to just stress, everything is going from Willis Ave, nothing is coming in from Emerson. And that's basically, the hours of operation will be 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a Approximately three to four people employed there as a result.
I neglected to say at the beginning that we're hearing, as we often do, two companion cases, one for the re-subdivision, the other for the project site review, for the convenience that it allows all the speakers to address concerns from either application in one presentation. And when it comes time for action, the commission will act separately on each of those two items. So I should have stated that at the outset, but I think you've covered all that, and thank you for the presentation. I'll pause now and see if there are questions from the commission members.
So along Willis Avenue, and I can't tell from your photos, and I can't tell from Google, is there, is there a curb line? Is there a curb?
Yes, yes, right here we have full height granite curbing. It's right on the drawing.
And what is that dimension for that open curb cut right there?
It's here.
Uh huh.
It's about, I think it's about 38 feet.
Um.
I had talked to the, sorry, I don't mean to-
No, no, go ahead.
I talked to the deputy commissioner, I can't think of that, of the DPW, and he had said that since this had served, or was serving two properties, they just combined into one opening.
How?
Because we, at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, we had talked about that. I called him, and he said, if you need me to do a curb cut, he said, I'll do a curb cut. But he says, you've got one that serves two now, so that's why we're, you know, trying to work with what we have. Like I said, that's more than adequate for us and for the guy dropping cars over here.
And you said 30-something?
Yeah, it's like 38 something like that.
Okay. There's another concern that was mentioned by the city's transportation planner, and much like the city staff, the commission has to consider the entire property.
Yeah.
So there's a question about the driveway that does face onto Emerson, and it's supposed to only be a 12-foot curb cut? And he was asking that that would be addressed with regard to the project?
We had, we had a meeting back in June up in zoning's office to go through the project, do a kickoff. Person from transportation was Neil Burke, and he addressed, or he brought up those questions and concerns. They're, beside those, they're quite lengthy, it's everything else that he'd like to see. Mr. Kearney was their own, and we went through that, and I had stated what it was going to cost to do everything that was wanted on the entire project. And then I got contacted by Mr. Kearney, I'll give this letter to Jeff. Let's copy. At that point, Mr. Kearney said that whatever's listed on there is not required at this time. He said, we're not going to make you do all that, because nothing else similar is done on any of the other properties. We don't keep bringing this up. There is a competitor across the street who's opened in the past two years who has done none of those things at all, and they're totally fine. They got a, you know, building permit and everything else. So those comments were not addressed because of what Mr. Owen, or Mr. Kearney had told us.
So we have those in your letter, but in his staff report, we don't have anything like that from Owen to us? But also, as far as I know, he can't really waive those things, can he? I didn't think so.
He had talked to somebody, and he gave me a call, and he said, these following items, he says, you're not going to be required to do. That's why I put that letter together at that time, just to follow up on-
I, I-
Right, right.
I appreciate that, but I'm not sure under what authority-
Oh, I understand.
-he did that.
I understand.
So typically, when we've reviewed requests like this regarding parking and its relationship to a public right-of-way, we've always, we've attempted to be consistent and make sure that where there's supposed to be public sidewalk, there's not asphalt, that there's a separation between, that if there's a planting strip required, that that's also included, that there's, that features are included in the site plan to prevent people from going from a parking lot and including-
Yeah, those, those things were discussed, and I asked the board to do some, some degree of thought on them. Mr. Burke kept bringing up that people are going to jump the curb to get into the parking lot. And I don't know how many places people actually jump a curb to drive into a parking lot. These are six-to-eight-inch-high curbs. I mean, you have it here-
Well, that might be his, partially his concern.
Yeah.
I think the other concern is where you have your parking, and I know now you're showing three trees there, or-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
-something. I think it's actually the opposite. It's that people who act, who use the curb cut men would encroach from the property into the public right-of-way to park, not that they would necessarily jump the curb.
Okay, yeah, he was, he was worrying about-
So, so also, what's the material of your parking? You're going, is that-
This is going to be asphalt.
Okay, and is there a curb that's going to be there so that his concern would be addressed? In other words, somebody can't jump off the asphalt?
We can, we can lightly curb it, we can put-
Or wheel stops, or something?
Or even the, they call it kick-up with the asphalt. So when they do the asphalt-
Right, they do, they do a roll curb, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that, that's that concern. And then again, there's the concern that on the residential street, it should be only a 12-foot-wide curb cut for a 12-foot-wide driveway. And I realize your client might not be using it, but we have to look at the whole property.
Well, like I said, we'll do what needs to be done. If you go further back on Emerson, you've got a place that works on buses and trucks. Their opening is like 50-foot wide.
Again, I think what-
Right.
-what we need to do is we need to consider the application that's before us.
Right, I know. We're saying since nothing has been done around it, to concur with that.
Got to start somewhere.
Nope. No.
And the other question was, you know, maybe that was the last question I had. Okay, I think that was the last question I had, so I defer to my colleagues.
Set with questions. Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Is there anyone?
Maybe.
Sorry. It's me.
Ladies and gentlemen, our, our first meeting, Mrs. Varga, who owns a few houses on Emerson Ave, complained about the traffic jam we are going to cause on Emerson Ave if we open a store. Matter of fact, we have nothing to do with Emerson Ave. She didn't know the main entrance to the building is on Willis Ave. Customers and deliveries will be going in and out on Willis Ave. I wish Mrs. Varga explores the geographic location of Emerson Ave and Willis Ave. Instead, exploring, instead she, she was exploring my life story in our second meeting. Well, she didn't, she doesn't even live in this area. She doesn't care where these people go shopping. They have to walk almost a mile to get some vegetables or fruits, because none of the exist, existing stores carry vegetables nor fruits. If we open a store, we are going to carry vegetables and fruits. Well, in our second meeting, Mrs. Varga forgot about the traffic jam and the lack of security we are going to cause. Instead, she got personal, and she started telling me my life story. I would like to thank her for that. It was nice of her. But she forgot, we, we were here in the first place. I would, I would like to remind her that I came here to conduct business with educated, intelligent people, and not to tell each other life stories. One thing I want to mention, without mentioning any names, I was never arrested for buying food stamps from poor people, 50 cents on the dollar, and went to jail for two years for food stamp fraud. I have a lot more stories, but I didn't come here to, for that reason. Besides, the councilman Ryan joined Mrs. Varga by telling me my life story. Councilman Ryan, your area is very depressed area. I saw many boarded-up houses for lack of security and the drugs that overcome your district. Mr. Councilman, why don't you try to do better things for your district, like bringing new businesses to your area? I know some councilmen traveled the country trying to bring new businesses to their area. Your area got much worse in the last 20 years I was there. And here, a business coming to your doorstep, and you are turning it down. I hope you can differentiate between business meeting and social consultations. Some people accused me of doing some work in the building without permit. Well, this is a lie, a false accusation, because the inspector from the city code enforcement came and inspected the place four times, and he didn't find anything I did needs permit. And I would challenge anybody to find anything I did that needs permit, and I didn't do it, do it without permit. Well, by opening a store in this area will help revive the area and not to depress, depress it further. Besides, if we open the store, like I said in the last meeting, we are going to generate sales tax, sales tax for the city of Syracuse, and generate cash flow between seven to eight companies we are going to deal with. Besides, our country thrives on competitions. And as you know, competitions bring prices down and qualities up. I don't know why somebody would, would be afraid of competitions, as long as we play it clean and fair. This operation is going to be family-run business and not a stockholder company. It's a man, it's a man that, yeah, it's a man dad and daughter, it's a mom, dad and daughter store, and two or three workers from the area. Please let us have some common sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium and provide your comments.
Good evening. My name is David Pierce. I live at 125 Harbor Street, which is just about four short blocks away from his proposed, excuse me, project. I do not have a problem with him, all of those parcels together and opening up another convenience store. I do frequent the other store that's across the street, and its prices are high. When two other stores in the area closed, the prices of eggs, milk, groceries went right up. My only other alternative was I had to drive to, like Wegmans are out in the suburbs, which I didn't want to do. So I am definitely in favor of this project, and I have no problems with him completing this, and I hope you would agree with him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Are there individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name and address and your comments.
My name is James Daley, D-A-L-E-Y. I'm the attorney for Ms. Christine Varga, who owns several residents in the 9th block of Emerson Avenue, particularly 955 Emerson Avenue, which butts up against the back of the proposed project site in this case. Ms. Varga has asked me to appear on her behalf as she's traveling out of town for the holiday, and just to raise a few points in opposition to the proposal. The first being that she has expressed concerns about this proposed store presenting a potential nuisance to the area. It's my understanding, and based upon some documentation that I've been supplied, including a police report, that Mr. Musharabash had previously owned a market of the same, I believe, proposed name of Greenfront Market on Avery Avenue. There are documented cases of there being issues with the sale of untaxed cigarettes and potentially alcohol to minors. Ms. Varga has asked me to express to the court, or excuse me, to the panel, that she's concerned also about the location being in such close proximity to the residence she owns, as well as the neighboring residents. It appears to be there would be a matter of feet from the back of the proposed store to those properties, and she has concerns about safety issues with regard to the potential for unsafe smoking or firing hazards that could be brought forth if, in fact, there is loitering outside of the store and uncareful smoking that could result in potential fire hazards for her tenants and other residences in the area. With regard to the need for another store in the area, it's my understanding, and there's been some testimony, that there are, there is another store directly across the street. I can't speak to exactly what items they sell, but there is the availability of other markets in close proximity, and Ms. Varga has asked me to express to the panel that she believes that adding an additional store to that area would change the character of the neighborhood. In fact, there being so many close residences in close proximity, that she is concerned that there is not a need for an additional store in that area, and that she asked that the petition be denied and that the site remain as it is currently zoned and opposes any joiner of the two sites, as well as the site plan for the proposed store. As all have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Daley, very much. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Chad Ryan, I'm a city council member here on behalf of the district. So I'm glad Musa brought up it being a tax benefit for the neighborhood, because I have an arrest record here for him being at Greenfront, not paying taxes on illegal cigarettes. And so I don't know what taxes he's contributing, but he's on record as not contributing to taxes and selling illegal cigarettes. As far as the property goes, the, I have some questions about- As far as the property goes, the, I have some questions about the property layout. The property being a store is going to be cumbersome on a neighborhood and I think not addressing those issues like sidewalks are important. Sidewalks that are going to be used, if it's a corner store and it's going to be used for food and a neighborhood store, needs to have sidewalks. Having green infrastructure is a necessity, you know? Not doing this stuff is a detriment to the property. Not doing landscaping to the property is a detriment. Also, there should be barrier along the Willis Ave entrance to differentiate the two properties. It's sort of a strange cut there as you go in off the road. And if it's going to be a new location, it should be clearly marked and have, be in addition to the neighborhood. I mean, if we're talking about it being in addition to the neighborhood, it should have good infrastructure, good sidewalks, and good green spaces. I am against this project. I understand you have to look at the task at hand. I think we've all belabored the issue of the track record of the Greenfront Market and its, you know, tremendous impacts it had on the neighborhood and very detrimental. I would like to see the project denied. If the project is not denied, I think that at least he should do the utmost to make sure the property is in good shape for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just a minute, sir. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. No additional speakers. Sir, either one of you, if you'd like to respond to the comments made in opposition, just identify yourself again because this is being recorded.
My name is Musa Shama. I'm the husband of Basma Mashrabash. This gentleman you just mentioned about, well, complaining about the sidewalk, we're going to ruin the sidewalk. Right next to me is a junkyard and trucks loaded with cars on top going in and out on the sidewalk all day long. How come he doesn't complain about that? And I didn't see they ruined the sidewalk? And we are going to ruin the sidewalk? It doesn't make any sense to me. By complaining, only us, we're going to ruin the sidewalk with either delivery trucks or people walking through or their cars beside, right next to me, we're going to use the same driveway, actually. And they're going in and out, this junkyard with cars loaded all day long. How come he doesn't complain about it? Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we've heard from all the speakers and we will now close the hearing and move to our next hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was speaking for the, please, please, come right up and...
Joe Mastriani, engineer for the project. Just to re-go with some of the comments that were made, Mr. Daley says a nuisance to the area. He made the comment about not paying taxes on cigarettes and maybe selling alcohol to minors. Well, there's no maybe if there's a lawsuit or if there's a ticket. I mean, he either sold alcohol and was found guilty or not. You can't say maybe. It's like maybe being pregnant. Okay, so that's not even applicable to that. Last meeting, the owner has said that they have at the other store, at the old Greenfront and at the new one, they have off-duty policemen come in and they pay them to patrol there, to be on premises, to make sure nobody loiters, to make sure nothing's going on there, things like that. And they'd be happy to have that put into the requirement for this store as well to keep it safe. Under Mr. Ryan, his statements, I'm a little confused because we pointed out in the beginning, this entire area here is going to be topsoiled to get good grass growing. We're putting in, our providers here, we're putting in Bradford pears across the front. I mean, there's going to be landscaping done. So he's making statements that there's no landscaping being done. Maybe he didn't look at the map. I'm not sure. And the sidewalk issue, if we have to do something in regard to sidewalks, like I said, I talked to the people in the area, particularly the gentleman owns a computer store and the people across the street. And I stated it at the beginning, when they did Willis, there was sidewalks. When they did Willis, there was a grass strip. And then the city, which is fine, they opted to then pave all the way up to the highway right-of-way line. And they got rid of the grass strip, they got rid of any sidewalk that was there. So right now, if we go to redo the sidewalks, and if we have to, we have to, we're going to have to go through and jackhammer or dig through two to three inches of asphalt and then the concrete of the sidewalks underneath. I mean, they made an impermeable barrier on top there. So there was stuff there, but now we're being told we'll take off what we did two years ago. So that's costly and I just want to bring that to somebody's attention. If it wasn't there, it'd be an easy thing to do. It was almost capped with asphalt and now we're being told rip all that off at your cost. So that's all I had to say on that.
Thank you for the additional comments, response to the earlier speakers. Now we will close the hearing and move to our next application. Thank you all.
David Pierce, 125 Emerson Ave. I know we can't do this, but I wish you folks could see the property. The Emerson Ave where the houses, it's on a completely different grade, different driveway. There's no, nobody's going to be going down Emerson Ave, cutting through over fences or anything to get to this. If you could see the front of the building, there's no way from anybody from Emerson Ave or the community down there to even get to his location. They have to walk around the block. They're on a completely different grade. So, I mean, I only live a block from there. I don't see how that's going to contribute to any traffic or people walking by or anything like that.
I think we have sufficient information and I think several of the commission members have visited the site already. So I think there's some familiarity with the topography in that district.
Listen, this sounded like there wasn't, but there are two different streets that don't connect.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to our next application.
Next public hearing is SP 1822. This is a special permit for indoor amusement and recreation at 1153 to 1169 West Fayette Street. John Noviasky is the owner and Christian Van Luden is the applicant. And this property lies within an industrial Class A zoning district.
John Noviasky, owner of 1153 West Fayette Street. 1153 West Fayette Street is a three-acre property and I have a large building in which they're looking for a special permit for nineteen hundred square feet on the second floor of this building. It's, the special permit is for indoor amusement and recreation. There'll be different types of events occurring there. I have with me in the audience two individuals who are business partners who are going to be running those events. If you need any details on those events, we can bring them up. Christian Van Luden is one of the owners of the event facility. And he's been an owner of a local business, Roji Tea House, for about ten years. And Mariah Riley, she works for the health department and is also floral designer. She's one of the business partners that will be running the events. So that's what we're looking for tonight, is a special permit for indoor amusement and recreation. And we've worked through all of the logistics as far as the safety requirements and such. And parking has been determined as well. And the other person I'm going to have speak tonight is Jack Phillips. He's an architectural designer. He works at CNS Engineers in Syracuse and he's going to be reviewing these plans.
Good evening. I am Jack Phillips. I'm the project architectural designer. So what we're doing for this event space is pretty standard. It's a little over nineteen hundred square feet. So what we've done is I've done the appropriate study to show routes, proper distances, so that we're in the required amount for that as well as interior rooms, maximum distances to find that we have the appropriate amount of exits necessary for that. And please interrupt me if you have any questions during the, as we go. We got into calculating the amount of occupancy for the office space or for the, excuse me, for the event center. And we are, our number that we're reaching right now is two hundred and seventy-five occupants based on the amount of square footage. We've done a study to show the different types of events that might happen in this space. So we have, let's see right here. So this is a podium, a lecture configuration, which would be our tightest, most dense occupancy. That would be one hundred and eighty. We do have a concert venue, which would get us to two sixty, but that is still below our maximum occupancy. And then we have seated event coordination, you can think of wedding parties, things of that nature. And then lastly, we've done a setup for a craft fair to show how many booths would fit in this space and the occupancy required for that, which is two hundred and twenty-five. Now we've calculated out the parking based on the city's zoning laws for this space. So I've done this as well and I've shown the other rooms within the building. This space being the first floor occupancy, this being the second, which includes that event center. In this space, this lighter area being the third. Now, running the city's calculations for the amount of parking spaces needed, this is how many we total. We have, I believe, I believe it's fifty-eight additional parking spots in the event of influx and things of that nature, with additional ones possible. We're looking into that now. But this is, this is just about where we are. We've gone into compliance with adding some greenery space in the front and it looks pretty good, if you ask me. But, yeah, this is where we are. If you have any questions.
So you outlined four different configurations for the space that would relate to one type of activity or another, different type of event that would go on in there. What do you think is the most common, most typical event?
Might be better if, yeah.
Before you relinquish this, this is a design question. Where on the overall building floor plan is this space?
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry.
So is that Fayette Street at the top of the building?
Fayette Street would run right here. This is on the top.
Okay.
Yeah, Fayette Street is, yep. Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christian Van Luden. And the name of the event space will be West Loft and it'll be run seven days a week. We'll have various businesses kind of that would be tied into this event space as well. Mornings and afternoons, we have Dharma Yoga. That'll be actually running a satellite location there. And we presume that the events, concert events will be like Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, mainly two to three days a week only. So, and those will only run maybe like twice a month. Weddings, bridal showers will also be like another facet of this space. We also have some art educational pieces going into this as well, too, working with someone that was actually a curator at the Iverson. So the idea is just to kind of bring a lot of people into the building and keep the space going like all day long, so.
Hours of operation on the weekends would go to what hour?
Yes, Friday and Saturday, eleven AM to one AM. Sunday through Thursday, nine AM to ten PM.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just to follow up on design issues. So there were a number, when the owner was here last time for another tenant, there were a number of, there were a number of items that were to be incorporated into the access and egress in the parking area. And I see that in the staff report, the city transportation planner noted that if, that some of those might not have been implemented yet. One was an ADA compliant pedestrian access from the sidewalk to the front entrance of the building and a stop bar installed, I think in the parking lot is what he means. Have those been taken care of? Have those already been installed as part of the...
Sorry, what was the first one?
It says, clearly defined ADA compliant pedestrian access is required from the sidewalk, I believe he means the public sidewalk, to the front entrance rather than having folks walk into the driveway. And that a stop bar be installed? I'm not exactly sure where he meant that.
Oh, a stop sign?
Stop bar.
I think it goes for the cars in the parking lot.
Jeff, do you recall where the stop bar was? Is it in the driveline?
Generally, it's...
But that Neil was referring to.
...the stop sign, the white stripe on the pavement to key when, where to stop in front of the stop.
So that you're not stopping on the public sidewalk as you're leaving the property?
Correct. I do have that.
Oh, okay.
That is in place.
Is there a sidewalk that goes from the public sidewalk on Fayette Street into your property to your front entrance?
There is not.
Okay. I think everything else that we had talked about as part of the last request seems to have been taken care of. So it's only the sidewalk then, it sounds like.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, there would be a way to etch out a access for a walkway handy, you know, like where you could wheel in from.
I seem to remember us talking about that the last time you were here. I assume it ended up in our approval the last time. And I'm looking at what looks like a really old image on Google, but, so I just, the point of asking about this is because...
Sure.
...city transportation engineer, but this body also had asked for that the last time you were here. So as we're considering another approval, it'd be good to know that the conditions we set last time were being met.
Yeah. I can, I will do that. I have not done that. I forgot it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm set.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium to provide your comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. Looks like we don't have any additional speakers, so we'll close this hearing and move to our next application.
The next public hearing is SP 1823. This is a special permit for a restaurant at 3408 to 3416 Burnett Avenue. NSSM Peacock LLC is the owner. Liberty Deli of Syracuse is the applicant. And this property lies within an industrial Class A zoning district.
Good evening. My name is William Pitcher, Pitcher Architect, Eagle Avenue, Syracuse, New York. What we're proposing is conversion of three little storefronts into a deli. And this is the old Casa de Campagna Restaurant on Burnett Avenue. It's a combination of a restaurant building, small strip mall stores, and two apartment buildings, two apartments within the building. In response to the comments by the various departments, you have in front of you some revised plans showing the front parking area that I think addresses most of the concerns that were raised in the comments. And I will be going down through the list that you have in front of you in response to each of these things. In regards to off-street parking, there are several procedural considerations regarding new parking in front of the building. As shown on sheets L1 and L2, the new parking requires approval as a major encroachment within the public right-of-way. This application has been submitted to DPW and is under review. I think it is presently being held in zoning administration until after this hearing. I think it is presently being held in zoning administration until after this hearing. In discussion with zoning administration, it is our understanding that if the proposed new parking is acceptable to the commission, that you may put an approval condition on DPW's approval. And basically, if DPW doesn't approve it, then we're back here again with, with a revised submission. So, that was the discussion, that go forward with what we want and see whether or not DPW will confirm that. There's another existing special permit on this property, which is the old restaurant special permit, so that all the parking shown on here includes both the deli, the stores, the restaurant, and the apartments. So, we have those two things going. Presently, the restaurant is not operational. It's planned to go under renovations, so at this particular time, there are no parking requirements, active parking requirements for the restaurant. Regarding the driveway setback distances, the revised site plan shows those islands and buffer islands have been added along the property, west and east entrance. So that complies with that requirement. Regarding the rear parking lot, there is a chain link fence and some bumpers along the east property line of the rear parking lot, so I think that encroachment issue is addressed there. The west side doesn't have anything other than the edge of the asphalt, and the neighboring property is basically an overgrown field. If so required by the commission, we will put bumpers or some other barrier along that edge of the property line to comply with that requirement. As for the building signage, there is an existing ground sign, and that's in your, on your drawings, that's sign A. It is right in the pathway of the, the traffic, so we're proposing that sign A be rebuilt in the same size and dimensions, but to be located at the new west entrance. And that what we're proposing with the diagonal parking and the control signs is a one-way traffic pattern through the front of the building. So, the other signs relate to traffic control, they say exit only, entrance only, additional parking in the rear. So those, that covers all of the ground signs. The front of the building signs, the wall signs are pretty much under the limit, and those are shown on the elevation drawings. Regarding landscaping and sidewalks, basically, the comments were to, from the traffic planner, were to limit the access lane to the diagonal parking spaces to twelve feet, and to increase the buffer along Burnett Street. We're proposing six-inch curbing and to make that separation between the existing street traffic lane and what would be the parking lot. And on L one, you can see that there's an inventory that I put together of all the various conditions along Burnett Avenue. We have some gutters that appear to have been installed by the city, we have some curbs that have been installed at other locations and developments. The common denominator of all of that seems to be a single lane east and a single lane west, basically a two-lane street. And that's what we're proposing, is to continue that two-lane street appearance, and that's what DPW will be looking at and deciding on. We feel that the parking in front of the deli is important for its function, its business function, it's basically a takeout delivery and/or delivery, but it's basically takeout, and so convenient parking at the front door really is, is an important thing. The other problem with the site is that it drops one story, that to the rear parking lot. So, it's very difficult to get to the front of the building from the rear parking. For this reason, we're very interested in having the parking along the front of the building. We will have, with the addition of the deck, the seasonal deck in the rear, there will be an additional stairway, which will go into the back door of the deli, so that is a possibility. There was some discussion about, from the planner, about putting along the east property line, another sidewalk from the rear parking lot to the front, but the, the grades are extremely street, steep, and that would basically be a series of steps that would have to be put in. And we believe that the, the stairs from the new proposed deck basically provide that function of, of getting in the back door into it, so we haven't proposed any new sidewalks along the east property line. Let's see. Also, there was the question about providing public sidewalks, and we have provided the sidewalks through the island and with curb cuts and handicapped access at the ends of each of them. There will be ADA access points at the sidewalk in front of the building. There was a comment also about the cars encroaching on the sidewalk and limiting the width of the pathway for ADA compliance, and as a result, I've moved the edge of the sidewalk, which is a four-inch-high curb, the edge of the sidewalk out two feet to act as a tire stop, to preserve the required distance. So that's why you see the, the concrete appearing underneath the parking spaces. That's basically where the tires of the cars will hit. On the arterial setback distance, that basically is an issue, we, we ask for a waiver on that. On the number of parking spaces, we're also short, we ask for a waiver on that. Engineering comments were that the SWIP might be necessary if we disturb more than ten thousand square feet. The actual area of the island is approximately twenty-five hundred square feet, so I don't think we're going to be into that level, and we're not proposing, the rest of the parking area is existing asphalt, so we're not disturbing the existing asphalt. So I don't believe that we'll need a study on that. As far as their comment on the stormwater runoff, the site actually drains to the rear parking lot, so there's no, no existing or proposed future runoff towards the street or towards adjacent properties. It basically all runs down the west driveway into the rear parking lot. At the end of the rear parking lot is basically unscrub land with brush and grass, where all of the rainwater basically is absorbed into the ground at that point. There's no evidence of gullies or erosion in that area, so apparently the area is sufficient to absorb runoff. Regarding the county's one-to-one offset plan for the sewage, basically, we are increasing the permeable area of the site with this front planting. We're making more area where water can be absorbed on the site. Regarding the planning board, Anadaga County Planning Board, they noted the existing patio area and the existing seating area as to remain on our drawings, we have it to be removed. They also commented on the front parking area, and we've modified that. Regarding sanitary sewer flows, since the restaurant is not operational at this point, we don't believe that the deli will increase the sewage discharge beyond what the restaurant had, and when we come back to, with the restaurant renovations, we will address that issue. Regarding the two-thousand-foot limit from DES remediation recites, those are basically downhill from the site, near six ninety and, and four eighty-one, so they're not, not on this site. And regarding the long-eared bat habitat, we're not proposing any changes to any of the, the brush and scrub on the side of, on the south side of the parking lot. If you have any questions?
Can you just say again what waivers you are asking for?
We're asking for a waiver for the parking. We are, we are asking for permission to be in the right-of-way. I guess that is a, is a, that's a DPW decision, but I, it's also, I think, from your point of view, it's an appearance decision, it's a neighborhood appearance decision. Opposite side of the street is all residential, and right now, they're looking at Burnett Avenue, and then they're looking at another, and the asphalt pavement extending another forty feet. So, as far as the island's concerned, I think we're looking for your permission to proceed with, with that kind of planting. There, the, the, Anadaga County notes that in the revised zoning of rezoned Syracuse, there is no planning buffer required at the front property line. So I guess at this point in time, I'm asking for a waiver of that requirement, which would be where the parking spaces are, to waive the requirement of the buffer on the property in lieu of having it at the street line with the new island. So I'm asking for that waiver. We're asking for a waiver on the ground signage because the existing ground sign is greater than permitted. We're okay on wall signs. Those are really the main waivers.
Can I ask a question, since you just gave us new plans?
Yeah.
Right now? So on the L two sheet, which seems to be indicating the whole entire property, you've got off-street parking and you label certain areas with letters of the alphabet, can you indicate where is G? Because I can't find G on this.
Let's see.
You have seventeen spots in area G.
At this point in time, I can't.
Okay, so we'll have to, we'll take away a hundred and thirty, seventeen from a hundred and thirty-two. So there's more of a parking waiver there. But it looks like you also added one in the front, number twelve, it's not labeled, is?
That is the handicapped access lane, it's not a parking lane.
Okay, so that should be indicated on?
Yeah, that's indicated on L two. It's the loading area.
Not on L two, though?
No.
L one.
Or L one. Not the new ones you gave us. Yeah, you should hatch it. You can hatch it. And then also, it looks like you accommodated pedestrian access in revision number one with the triangle, probably addressing the transportation planner's concerns for, for pedestrians to safely walk through. How did you accommodate the same amount of parking spaces? Did you reduce the drive aisles, or how did the same amount of parking spaces fit now with essentially one gone per width?
It was always eleven spaces in one loading area.
No, I'm talking in the back, so you're.
Oh, in the back.
Your C, D, and E? You, it looks like you have a pedestrian access.
Yeah. On, on L two, if you look at the center of the parking lot, that little bump out is the rear entrance to the old restaurant, and he said he wanted some kind of centrally delimited pedestrian pathway. So basically, I just picked up those parking spaces and moved them over one parking space, and we'll stripe the driveway to show the pedestrian pathway. As a new parking area.
So, did you shift them to the?
To the east.
East? Okay. So, my only concern would be the people in area F backing up, is there enough drive aisle there because you moved it?
Yeah, we've got twenty-five feet for coming out.
Okay. And then I just wanted to clarify the encroachment. It's the common council's decision, the, that gets sent around to all different departments. We are one department that will comment on it, and in this instance, because the commission is reviewing this proposal, we will act on your behalf and make whatever comments you would make about any encroachments on the property. Oh, and also, you didn't identify hours of operation in the.
I will, the owner will talk to you about hours.
Can I, before we move to that issue, sticking with design issues for a moment? If the larger restaurant is not operating right now, do we need to take into consideration that there is, it's a, it's a vacant, it's an unused commercial space and therefore there are no parking requirements for it? In which case, this application would not need a waiver, but when the new restaurant goes in that space, it might need a waiver.
Well, the question remains, if a new restaurant comes in, they can utilize that existing special permit for that.
Got it.
Restaurant.
Okay.
So because it runs with the land, you know, this is, this is an additional special permit for this specific space.
Right.
To be taken into consideration as a whole. So unless the owner of the property requested to rescind that special permit, then we, we would say at this time, the requirement for vacant space is nothing. However, unless they demolish that, that, and it is still a restaurant, the, the requirement would be, would be the same. But you can take into consideration, you know, any or all of those factors.
Similar, just related design question, because in terms of the parking in front of the building and the encroachment in the right-of-way, as drawn, the spaces are on the private parcel, but it's backing into the right-of-way to actually exit, that's the issue.
Yes. And the special permit in nineteen ninety-nine, it was shown those parking spaces, and the commission at that time refused because they had to back into the right-of-way to turn around, so those spaces were taken off of the, the special permit for the restaurant.
So basically, what's there has been quote illegal for however long. So that's the issue before DPW and the council specifically, is whether, from their perspective, whether or not to allow the encroachment for exiting these diagonal spaces.
Well, I think it's the physical improvements that are buffering the backing out is the encroachment. The, the physical improvements that are being proposed on this new plan, it looks like a big island.
Yes.
And it, it's not labeled, but it, not on this one, this one it is. So I think there's new parking buffer, six, six foot by four foot granite curbs, planted lawn, trees.
So.
Six, a sign, well, the sign can't be in the right-of-way, so that might need to come out. Eleven, sorry, just received these, I'm looking. So, so the physical improvements are what is in the right-of-way. Now, if the transportation planner is saying it's not safe to back out into the right-of-way, and this helps mitigate that, then that, that's something that they will look at. Again, all, many different departments look at the encroachment, not just, not just ours.
So it's not just that they're backing out in the right-of-way, but to, to get permission to do that and make it safe, these folks are proposing this island, so that complicates now what the request is. to get permission to do that and make it safe, these folks are proposing this island. So that complicates now what the request is, can we back out into the right-of-way, and can we build this island?
Right, right at the moment, there is no division between...
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at that. So again, it's, it's both issues that are being requested, and at that point. If this were all denied, have you considered just five parallel spaces along the front of the building that would service the deli?
It's a possible option. We would have to come back, if it's denied, we have to do a whole new application.
Just that it might give you the sort of pickup spaces that you need?
Yeah.
And maybe not have to do all this other stuff? Okay, one other question. I was confused about what you just said a few minutes ago about the sign. So there's the existing ground sign.
Yes, if you look on L1.
Right.
Right, sort of in the center of the parking lot where the bump is, that
Right.
Number one is the existing sign. If you look to the right, sign A, dotted F is the existing sign, and what we're proposing is the, the sign A, which is going to be number six at the west entrance. So we're proposing to build a new sign of the same size and dimensions, but moving it out of the traffic pathway.
Is in the right-of-way.
So you need approval for that as well?
Yes.
So there would not be two large ground signs, there would only be?
One.
One. So...
And if it's denied, then probably the existing sign will remain where it is within the right-of-way.
Assuming that was a previously approved encroachment anyway.
Well, I don't know about encroachment, it was previous, it was noted on the previous nineteen ninety-nine special permit for the restaurant as being a sign under the special permit.
So it's still, that still would have needed an
Yeah.
Approval by the common council.
So in the staff report, on page, not numbered for me, page... No, I can't. Page two of the staff report, number nineteen, which says the proposal is allowed one wall sign and one ground, and the applicant is proposing to install two ground signs, that's not the case anymore then?
Yes, that is the case.
It still is the case.
If you look at sheet L1, unless it's been revised, illustration, excuse me, illustration five
Traffic.
Is for two ground signs that reference the restaurant. So because it's referencing the restaurant.
Your own.
Sheet L1.
Got it.
Illustration five.
Oh, sign B?
Yes.
Traffic? Oh, because it has the name of the restaurant on it?
Yes.
It's not just a directional sign at that point?
Correct.
Ah, I couldn't find that one before, so thank you. Okay. I... It is either, so the smaller sign, forget the smaller sign. The other sign, is that forty square feet, or is that, does that require, if, we forgot about the small one for a moment, if they simply took the name of the restaurant off it, I assume that would be okay? But the larger sign being proposed, does it meet the size requirements?
It needs a waiver, it's larger.
It's la-
Two-sided.
Oh, because it's two-sided? Oh, okay. And forty is what's allowed?
If you look at the sign table on item twenty-two of your staff report.
Yep.
The sign A,
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the large tenth ground sign, the panel for the restaurant requires a waiver.
This is the one that says thirty-four point eight feet per square, square feet per side? Okay. And since we're doubling it, okay.
It requires a waiver for the number of signs in the area, because that would be, again, there are two ground signs for the restaurant.
Because this directional one actually has the name of the restaurant? If it didn't, it wouldn't be considered? If it didn't have the name of the restaurant?
It's, it's advertising the use. But if it was directional, it can be no larger than nine square feet.
Got it. Okay. And this is ten.
We'll stipulate taking the name off, because it's basically saying additional parking in the rear, and a waiver for the area. Okay. Just...
Questions at this point? You still have another part of your presentation, correct?
Yes.
Design issues unresolved at the moment? Then let's move to the other part of the presentation, if you will, please.
Good evening. My name is Diane Ponowski, and I'm owner of Liberty Deli and as well partner of NSSM Peacock LLC. So our proposal is to hurry up and bring back Liberty Deli, which was originally located at three twenty-three Irving Ave, I know. So we're anxious to do that, and with that said, we want to take three of those units and make it into the deli. And our hours of operation are proposed to be eight AM to six PM in the evening, Monday through Friday, and Saturday is nine to three, and closed on Sundays. We're looking at maintaining the same level of service and food varieties as we have in the past, which are fresh-cut meats, sandwiches made to order, hot grilled foods, entrees, either eat-in or take-out, in addition to our homemade sweets and the beverage lineup and little snacky foods. So we're hoping to add, build up to eight employees in the beginning, and hopefully we can add more based on customer traffic. So if there are any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward, sir, and provide your name, address, and your comments.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Ponowski. I live at one fourteen Longwood Drive. I am the son of Diane Ponowski, and I am in favor because those sandwiches are friggin' awesome. That is all. It will not only benefit Burnett, but all of central New York.
We, we can quote you on the quality of the sandwiches. Other individuals who might want to speak in favor of this application, please come to the podium? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? No additional speakers, we'll declare the hearing closed. Thank you all very much, and we'll move to our next hearing.
The next public hearing is a re-subdivision that has a companion piece, a new business companion piece. So in your agendas, the companion piece is new business item number one. So this re-subdivision is R eighteen forty-six, and this is to divide one property into two new lots. This is the Loretto Housing Development Fund C Incorporated, that's the owner and applicant. It's at three twelve Fillmore Avenue, and this is a planned institutional district, so it's one of our PIDs. The companion piece, the reason they're doing the re-subdivision, is Z twenty-eight oh five. This is a project plan review to make some exterior alterations on the building and the site. Also at three twelve Fillmore Avenue, Loretto Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated is the owner and applicant. Again, it's a planned institutional district. So the new business item, under the rules and regulations for an institutional districts, this is a new business item because it doesn't require any waivers or adjustments to the, the district plan.
And again, these are presentations, we'll hear all this concurrently and act separately.
Good evening. Bruce King, Holmes King Caucus and Associates Architects. I also have Joanne Galliano and Sarah Hogan from EDR here. They'll be handling the site side of the presentation. And we also have a couple of folks from Loretto who can answer questions should they be needed. So this project involves the pious, the tenth building, which is this bar attached to the star-shaped building. Here's the, here's the fae building down here, just for orientation, Interstate eighty-one. The original project was built in nineteen fifty-five. It was built as an apartment residence for clergy and had forty-one units. We're proposing to redevelop it as senior housing with a component for less, less well, but not nursing care seniors. In the process, we'll reduce the unit count from forty-one to thirty-five. They'll all be one-bedroom units, I can kind of run through the plan. The current site development includes forty parking spaces. The proposed site development that EDR will review with you reduces that count to thirty-two. So the overall use intensity is going down with the alterations. The proposal basically creates apartments, thank you, Sarah, creates apartments on all levels on the first floor, which is currently visually, I guess you'd say, the basement. It's, the current entrance, actually, it comes in up here next to the Heritage Building. The new entrance will come in from the lower level. And so there's a entry vested building office, and then as we move up, apartments on the first, current first, second, and third floors. The entrance, as I say, used to come in at this position, that's going to be eliminated. The connection to the Heritage Building, which was originally a party wall, is going to be restored to a party wall, so that they become again separate structures. There'll be a community room on this floor, and then otherwise, it's a series of one-bedroom apartments. This is a New York State Housing and Community Renewal funded project, so it's operating in the affordable seniors range in terms of unit size and so forth. Interiors, all-new construction. Exterior basically won't change much in appearance. I'll skip over the intermediate floor plans unless anybody has questions. This is the view from the lower level. This block currently is solid masonry, we'll be adding windows to that block. These bays are a series of garage bays, which will be enclosed and become apartment units. This area in front, as Sarah will show you, was, is all parking up against the building. That will be reworked to introduce some green space adjacent to the building. Otherwise, exterior work is masonry restoration, window replacement, the, the normal renewal that you'd expect on a nineteen fifty-five building that was quite well-built to begin with, but is showing, showing a bit of age in a few places. With that, I'll turn this over to EDR. If we flip the board around, your site's all on the back. Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hogan, and I'm from EDR. I'm one of the project managers for this project. So tonight, we are here to request subdivision approval for this project. As you can see, the parent parcel is about thirteen acres, and we're requesting to subdivide into about a one-and-a-half acre parcel, which is the red line that you see right here, the proposed subdivision line. All of our development minus a few of the pedestrian pathways is within this development, or within the subdivision line. We do have a few easements that we've been working with the city of Syracuse on. Water access easement, water easement for our domestic and fire to the project site. We are also showing a twenty-foot sanitary sewer easement along the backside of the parcel and connecting down towards Spring Brook. The site plan, let's see if I can flip through. Where's my hand? Do you have, you have the rendering one, don't you?
Yes, I do.
I can take this one down. There we go. So to follow up on what Bruce mentioned with the development, you can see we are proposing an asphalt parking lot to accommodate some of the parking for the building, and we are proposing a new access entrance to this specific parcel. We have shown some land bank parking in the pedestrian pathways. We're maintaining the ten-foot wide asphalt pathways, they could be reduced. And then we are proposing some crosswalk connections up here to where Loretto would like to relocate one of the bus stops that's currently on-site, to be more accessible to the parcel over here to the south. We do have some concrete sidewalks, some general landscaping to provide for aesthetic reasons. We also have green space here that we've programmed for the residents, also trying to keep the parking away from the units, so there's no headlights going directly into the units. Our stormwater management area is over here. We roughly have about a little over eleven thousand square feet of increased impervious area, given the proposed improvements, and that's inclusive of the asphalt pathways and concrete sidewalks. Our intention is to capture, retain, and let it infiltrate in this area. We also are showing, for the balance of earthwork, I'm going to use some onsite burming over here and propose some vegetation, both evergreen and deciduous, to kind of give this particular parcel its own feel. And with that, I will open it to any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Okay, thank you all very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium.
Kathy Strively, three sixteen Monticello Drive North. I'll just pass out my comments here. First of all, I want to say, I'm not opposed to the renovation of the pious tenth building, and I'm not opposed to senior housing there either. I live downhill of this complex, and for the last thirty-five years, I've dealt with developments on this plateau. I'm opposed to sectioning off a section of the site for incremental review when we have this very large development, which I have. In the aerial photo, I wasn't able to annotate the entire development. I think it's a bad precedent. All the sanitary and stormwater lines from this building go down East Glen Avenue, and they all come down through... they all come down through, it's actually environmentally sensitive wetland, comes down East Glen Avenue, and there's an eight-inch sewer line, clay pipe, built in, I think it was 1926, somewhere around there, which has overflowed in the past due to Loretto Geriatric Center, Cunningham Building, and Faye Building discharges. In 1991, after they approved the Faye Building, which was another 200-bed unit from the 520-bed unit, they required Loretto to put in a grinder to grind all the stuff coming out of the Cunningham Building into smaller pieces so it would get down to eight-inch line, and also to put in a grease degreaser from the facility because it was creating so much grease. Now, that's the main building. I understand that's not what's proposed here. I'm just illustrating the kind of things that have happened to the neighborhood as a result of what's gone on there. I'm requesting that, I know you have this on your agenda as new business, but I'm requesting the commission to consider a public hearing for the site plan. I'm going to go over some other factors right now, but I believe there really should be a public hearing on every single site plan on this site. We've always had public hearings on the site plans for the site. Since the Faye Building, 200 beds, and the large southern parking lot, 177 spaces with little detention on the south edge of the site, and the parking lot to the north side of Faye in 1989-90, Loretto's proposed a mid-size, a mid-rise building, 51 units. That was in 1994. That was pulled back for some reason or another. I think it might have been because of what we submitted to the state about this site. In 2004, an overflow gravel lot was expanded to 130 spaces. It was paved and lighted, and that space had extensive review and had a lot of, has a lot of underground detention, and it has some surface detention and overflow and some other things there. So, it's quite a bit of surface detention and then also underground in that lot. In 2009, another 60-space parking lot was proposed, but that one has not been constructed. It's unclear to me if that one is still on the agenda or not. I have a picture of that one, if you'd like to see that one. It seems to be precluded by this development, but I'm not sure. Also, and I want to point out, in this site, there's only one entry to the site. It's off of Brighton Avenue. There's only one water line. It's off of Brighton Avenue. And in 2004, they, there was an exploration of whether or not they should build another water line from Seneca Turnpike, and we had meetings on it, and for some reason, I think they decided Seneca Turnpike line could not supply Loretto's site. There's only one water line. There's one emergency entry in and out of the site. So, I just wanted you to consider all that. That's the reason why I don't think we should start subdividing out this here and this there because there's other parts of the site that could still be developed, and we've got an overall impact here. It's a, there are two PID's serviced by one road and one water line. So, in all of these projects, we're at about 100% impervious expanse in the south PID, and this one's increasing in spite of what the architect said. I believe they're increasing the impervious area on the north PID. Okay. From what I could understand, and this was from articles in the paper, the original, or the existing building had 22 rooms in it. That's what they said. Now, they might have had more than one person in a room. It was the priest, the priest home. So, they're saying they're reducing the number of population. I don't know that. I don't know what the original population was. I don't know what the original sewage load was on that building. There's paving here. I don't think they're reducing the paving. I think they're expanding the paving, and they have what they call landbank spaces to the southeast of the lot, which I don't understand what landbank spaces are. But one thing I said today to Jeff, Loretto never has enough parking. They will come back for more parking, I predict, within five years. So, those spaces will become parking spaces, and that's just our experience. Parking lot proposals come every five years. We actually encouraged them at one point to take some things off-campus to reduce the load on the site, and I think they did, but they still have a parking problem. So, I don't know if this is a reduction or an increase from what's there. Again, that's for you to determine. This is a karst limestone plateau. Underneath it, it's fractured limestone beneath the Faye Residence. The bedrock, when they, when they went to bore down, was about four feet down. It's very close to the surface. I don't know what it is over where they're proposing their detention, but if you put water on top of karst lime, fractured limestone, it just goes down to the neighborhood. That's where it goes. So, up in this parking lot here, where they built some underground detention, and then they say some of it is supposed to absorb into the site, it goes right down to Springbrook, and we've had a lot more water coming over Springbrook since 2004. I don't know what it's due to. I mean, they would have to do tracers. There's no way to tell how this water, we have a lot of underground water. It's coming down the valley. It's a valley, I know that, but Loretto's contributing to it. If they put detention here on the surface and they don't put any restriction in it, it will just go right down to the valley, that's what it's going. And I've said this over and over. I've been before you on other projects, say the same thing over and over again. So, I'm just saying it again. That's where it's going to go. There's ways, there's, it's probably better, actually, to discharge it directly to the line that goes down Glen Avenue, which is quite large, this is quite large storm sewer, than it is to try to retain it on the top of the site. It's not being retained up there. It's just coming right down to the streets below and the residents below. Just to reiterate what we said before, there's no room for snow, snow storage on the site. At times, when they have a lot of snow, they have to truck the snow from the south end of the site up to the north end of the site. There's no store, storage around this lot. They're pushing the fence down toward the slope here. They have destroyed all the vegetation, which was originally put in to buffer this lot in the south. If they put these landbank spaces in, they won't have any snow storage space. There's maybe a little space there. They didn't address that, so I don't know, but that's a chronic problem if you, if you go up there during the big snows. It's a huge, huge chronic problem. I think I've mentioned everything except noise, and I just mentioned this again, although the commission has, I think, repeatedly disregarded it. When all this paving and building has gone on up here, we have I-81 here. The noise reverberates off the parking lots, the buildings, and boomerangs down into the valley. I won't mention large equipment on the Loretto-Cunningham Building, which throbs. I'm not sure what it is, if it's an emergency system, but we can hear the vibrations and the sound down the valley from this equipment all the time, and more paving only makes it worse. But I, you know, I, I know there's paving here. This isn't that much more than what's there, but I just want to bring it up that it's a problem, impact on the neighborhood, which in none of the previous times you've been before you, has made much of an impact, I don't think. So, I, in summary, I just, I raise concerns about subdividing off portion of this PID and looking at it as one little tiny thing in the midst of this large system, which all connects to this line that goes down Glen Avenue. So, in the past, this has led to serious problems, and I, I understand and I've witnessed the changing nature of senior care institutions. I know very closely, I know what that's about, studied that, spent a lot of time on that, but I don't think the city should facilitate avoidance of public review, and I'm requesting a public review of the site plan, unless you plan on doing that right now. And I oppose subdivision without strong reasons for this action, and that's mainly to consider the impacts of all this development together. But again, I don't, I don't oppose this building being renovated. I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's been there, it's a, it's a part of the site. I think the population was much reduced over the last few decades, so I really, like I said, I don't know what the population was originally.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Come forward, please. Just provide your name and address, and use the microphone to offer your comments.
My name is John Camerota. I am the nearest neighbor, next-door neighbor to the Loretto facility at the south end of the campus, the half the south. My property runs contiguous with Loretto for about a block at the west, southwest portion of the property. I've resided in the area, in that location, for over 50 years, and over the course of the time, the property was initially owned by the Diocese of Syracuse, which constructed the large 13-story Cunningham Building. That was the first project in 1973. Prior to that, there was the Bernadine Project, but that was more closer to the Valley Plaza. Technically, the Bernadine Apartments, that's a 23, I think a 23-story building. It's an independent living, combination of assisted living. That was the first project, then the Cunningham Building behind me. And it's been a nightmare on the, as was described, there is a plateau, and those of us who are downhill, including all the neighbor, the adjoining properties on Springbrook, which on the map, they run along at the west of the property, which be, which would be this area along here, there's a downhill neighborhood. You can't see it, and you don't notice it if you drive up to Loretto. But all these properties from, from Fillmore South to Seneca Turnpike along Monticello, they're all impacted by whatever Loretto does. Drainage issues, water in the basements, water, there's so much water that is seeping out now, it covers the streets, ice forms in the winter. So, I am not opposed to the use of the housing as a, as an apartment complex. I think it's very noble. It's a good use. The problem is that if there's no review, which has occurred in the past, then we don't know where, for instance, the outletting of the sewage and the storm runoff will go. When the Pius X was constructed and the adjoining Loretto Rest Building, which is now the Heritage Apartments, that was constructed in 1926, they all drain into the sewage system on Fillmore. And if you drive up Fillmore, it's an incredible slope, a steep slope that hill, and those lines, water that is not metered and controlled, sewage, water, whatever, comes running down those lines. It's a combination storm system built in the 20s, only an eight-inch circumference line, clay, tile. Those, the water just breaches, comes through the catch basins, flows out. We had a 100-year storm in the 90s. It was just incredible. So, to my knowledge, that's still the same, and those neighbors have to contend with those issues with water backing up into their basements and that sort of thing. In the 90s, there was a serious problem where those of us on Glen Avenue had, there was a clogging of the system, the storms were, excuse me, the sanitary system, literally gowns, gloves, sheets, towels were coming down the system, clogging the system on East Glen Avenue, the storm sewer system, another eight-inch clay line that was built in the 20s. These lines never were built to accommodate this kind of impact, this large system, this large complex. In, as was mentioned, in around 1994-95, there was a 65-unit apartment building for seniors proposed for the middle of the site, right next to the, directly east of the Loretto Rest and the Pius X home. It's in a big, open area. If you drive up there, you make a left off the bridge from Brighton Avenue, you'll see a beautiful, big green space. They had proposed this large facility for that area, which would have taken all the green space that existed, and to make a long story short, it was denied by the city. The mayor came up and walked the site. City people came and checked everything out. The answer was no, and Loretto wanted the city to pay for the cost of upgrading our system, our sanitary system, and if necessary, the storm sewer system. Loretto didn't want to pay for the cost. The city said no, and if it was to be a yes, they would, Loretto would have to bear the cost themselves. So, the project was scrapped, but fortunately, they found an alter, alternate, alternative location in North Syracuse, so the project was safe, which was beneficial in that respect. My point being that there seems to be a saturation point and a point now that it's reaching maximum capacity, and there has to be a review. My question is, are they going to move lines now, outlet sewage and stormwater, all the way on Glen? There is the, the overflow parking lot, which is described, part of that water, I think, if not all, is metered down into the Glen Avenue line, storm sewer line, and of course, this new proposal, this project should also bear, perhaps be treated in the same way. There should be some kind of control as to the volume being released from the system, and there should probably be impervious, rather, rather than impervious, pervious, a few pervious spaces, a setup where it could collect some of the water, then meter also that out down through the system. As to the bedrock issue, there is so much rock there that in the past, they had to use dynamite, and we had damage in our residence way back when the Cunningham Building was erected. They could feel the impact from the explosives all the way down to Glen Avenue. So, since then, we've always requested that no explosive be used to excavate that stone, and the city has been very good in that respect, requiring that they use a mechanical means, which they have. I do not know, I don't see much in the application. I don't know if the boring studies have been done or what else, but there needs to be a good review so that those of us who live downhill are not impacted adversely, most of whom, a lot of are elderly, they could not, most people cannot afford to mitigate the costs and damage themselves. And it would also be good if someone would require Loretto to purchase a bond or a chip so that if there is damage, that people are protected. I have one other concern, which is the snow storage. By eliminating all this green space, as was mentioned, in the past, particularly in the 90s, there were huge snowfalls. Loretto was prohibited from pushing snow over the parking lots to the downhill areas. No one has watched that over the years. They keep doing that. Fences have come down, the south parking lot, all the vegetation that was put to provide screening is pretty much degraded, and it would be useful to require them to maintain some green space so that they can have a storage area in the event of major snow. Because once you start using the area as parking lots and you have all cars... Because once you start using the area as parking lots and you have all cars, really nowadays, it's very little thought giving to snow storage. And there's no place to put it. You have to put it in existing parking spaces. And at that facility, most of the employees will not walk to the north, the open north parking lot. They're afraid because of the crime, especially at night. So everyone wants to be close to the building, which I understand, and I agree. If I were there at night, I would also want to be close to the building. So again, there must be some accommodation made for snow storage. I won't reiterate what has been said, but I do wish that you would provide a public review. That way, if any other issues come forward, we can bring it up. And that information be made available to us as to some of the questions that we've had tonight. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other individuals who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Your name and address for the record, and then your remarks.
It's Anita Sterns. I live at 411 East Glen Ave, directly below the gazebo. And I am right next to the culvert that is mitigating three freshwater streams that are springs, spring-fed out of the limestone that are DEC, I was told, DEC protected. I'm not supposed to do anything to them. That's a concern because when I looked at the map on the final page, and I didn't realize there was the other maps, I'm very, I'm not up to speed like these lady, this lady was. I'm sorry. I didn't even bring any comments that I could bring to you.
These comments are fine.
Okay. This new easement that they're projecting, even though they say that there's less people gonna, the projected number of units in the building that they're renovating is going to be 35 down from 41 units. There's some reason, they're showing a huge proposed 20-foot sanitary sewer easement. I could show you on this enlargement. It's right above my home, and I know that the sewer line is right going diagonally where people go up to work, actually, to Loretto's buildings across my property and up through the woods every day. So I don't understand if they need this sewer easement and it's, it's joining the existing old clay line that's never been redone. Infrastructure has never been rebuilt that I know of. Does that mean that they're going to actually bring bulldozers in there and start redoing lines or putting lines in? If that's the case, that's going to be a big problem because supposedly, there's protected, the waters are protected and the, there's some kind of species, I don't know, tubats or something. There's a forest there, it's a woodland. So I'm kind of concerned because I didn't get this announcement till about five days ago in mail. I wasn't prepared, so I was just looking at the map today and actually making sure I understood what was new. What was new was proposed 20, 20-foot sanitary sewer that's going to line up to this other sewer. So I don't know why they would need that if they are actually decreasing the number of human beings that are producing, you know, wash, washing their clothes and so on. So I'd like the clarification on that because there's going to be bulldozers up there. There's going to be a big problem. It's already a problem anyways, but I have a lot of runoff in my stream, and I'd like to actually address that a separate time as far as why there's an artificial stream in my, my property created by the previous owner. And it's, it's actually damaging my property because of the limestone underlying, soft, soft. If it's not a natural bed, it will find its own way over time downhill, and I am on a hill. So now I have leaching all over my property. Now, that's a different subject, but I can see where other people who live just below, like I do, right on this very steep hill, anything coming over, whether it's the snowpack melting or this new lagoon that they're proposing to capture drainage or water drainage. I don't know. To me, it's nerve-wracking, and I don't want to have it approved until everything is addressed. And I'm very nervous because I live right below them. Sorry, I'm not more prepared.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other individuals who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward to the podium. Looks like that is the extent of the speakers for this evening. So I turn back to the applicant team. Would you like to, you have the opportunity to address some of the comments made in opposition?
Yeah, perhaps I can just clarify a couple of things. The reason for the re-subdivision is funding sources. Because it's New York State Homes and Community renewal, they require a mortgage on the property. And that's, that's the logic behind it. In the process of doing the project, one of the things that we're attempting to do is restore the separation of this building from the Heritage Building. Currently, most utilities run through the Heritage Building. And that's the reason for some of the utility construction, is to get this building on its own services, to correct some of the issues that occur when you have one building served off another building. To clarify the density question again, the building was originally designed with 41 units. We have the original drawings. We, we know what the original design was. And as I say, it will go down to 35. We know the parking will go from 40 down to 32. As Sarah mentioned, there is a slight increase in the impervious area. That's to provide something that doesn't exist now, and that is the ability for fire vehicles to turn around. Right now, there is not a code-compliant turnaround in the parking area. They have to back out, and current codes don't allow them to back that far. So part of the issue in rearranging the parking is to create a loop drive that allows a fire truck to come in and come back out. We looked at a T-turn. We looked at other ways to minimize it. I think the loop really came out the most economical in terms of paved area. And, you know, the last piece to, you know, to the snow storage issue, you know, this site is in the middle of a lawn with graded areas that allow snow to be pushed without being a detriment to landscaping or any other properties and without reducing the parking area. The reason for land banking some of the parking is, as you've seen before with senior housing, rarely does a senior project utilize all of the parking that city zoning would require. But we do have the land to build it. Should tenants need it, it can be added, and that's the point of land banking. But we don't see any reason, knowing the track record of elderly housing, and, and, you know, our firm has done 20-some projects in this range, and it's very rare if we approach even 60% of the residents having cars. So that's the logic for land banking parking rather than building it now. There is no new construction as far as building is concerned. There's no, you know, we're not expanding the footprint. So there should be no significant construction issues in terms of foundation excavation and similar things. Anything you want, want to add on the utilities, Sarah, or?
Well, before you all switch, so there were 41 units, we're going to 35.
Yep.
Is the building currently occupied? And if not, when was it last occupied?
It is not currently occupied.
It was occupied within the last five years.
So if, if-
There were a number of retired priests, they evolved since relocation.
So one of the concerns that's been mentioned is whether or not the sanitary, current sanitary system can maintain, can sustain whatever the load has been or will be. So a five-year difference, but not knowing how many residents were there at the time. Is that something you investigated in terms of the current sanitary system? And then can you speak specifically to the easement that you're requiring and what's going to be involved with that specific, specific aspect of the project?
So to go back to the easement question, we'll start there. Thanks, Bruce. It is a 20-foot wide sanitary sewer easement. We did explore several options. Oh, sure. We did explore several options to look at potential pumping over to Fillmore as an option. This, in working with the city, seemed to be the most applicable solution for Loretto to gravity. There is an existing sewer from the Fahey residence that's gravityed. The reason why it is 20-foot is just a standard easement width for a sanitary, and it has a separation off the other existing sanitary that's running down the hill and connecting into East Glen.
So you're not tying into that, you're just laying a parallel line?
We're paralleling. We did actually explore and showed in one option, preliminary design schematic level, that to connect into this manhole and then have the potential for the city to take dedication up too. But they didn't like that idea, and they had advised to parallel and connect into East Glen for sewer.
So this is all going to, this is all new construction of this line that we're talking about?
Correct.
And, and so in terms of, I think the gentleman spoke about whether or not the sanitary system that exists, you're not tying into an existing line, but you are making a connection down here?
Correct. We're just running parallel with the line that's coming from the Fahey residence.
What's the, what's the existing slope right there?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I know it's significantly steep. We've run some preliminary profiles in here to look at the sanitary and the depth, and it is, it's deep.
So not a question for you, but a question for staff. Where, where is Seeker in all this? Because I was looking, I didn't see it under the new business item.
You fill out Seeker.
We've submitted a short form with the subdivision application.
So, so all of this, so all of, so in terms of the construction of this in your Seeker, you've looked at the impact of the construction in terms of erosion and water runoff? So that's all, and it's all done in a short form?
Yep.
So you're anticipating no impact from doing that construction? Because that's typically been a short form before, really.
Can I ask a question concerning that line? You said you're running a parallel-
Can you hold on just one second? So you can, if the chairperson calls you back up, come state your name again. But I just wanted to give you a chance to respond to the existing, to the, if you're finished with responding to the comments from the three people that spoke against, that's number one. And then if you are, then the chairperson can definitely call you back up and if you have another question. So I just wanted to give you a chance to finish.
Sure. I think the other thing to note was the existing sewage, the amount. Now internally, this was plumbed to the heritage. All we are doing is taking the flows for that proposed development, and because of the HCR process, we have to provide separate lines. I think there are, our, you know, our intent for the primary solution would be to gravity. I think there are options that we can discuss and look into in terms of a force main potentially. That might be a little less disruptive. But I think the, the initial intent, working with the city, was to gravity and connect into East Glen. And with that-
I, I don't remember if there were any other questions from the, I think Bruce answered all the other questions-
I think I-
raised by the other speakers?
Yes.
Okay, so-
I got to clarify some things that-
So people have to come up to the podium then?
Yep. And then I think after you speak, sir, if, I know he had a question.
I'm John Brennan from Burn, Castleton, Pickard. I'm the attorney for Loretto. There was mention of DEC wetlands or Army Corant. They're non-existent in this site. And for the record, all of these contentions that have been raised by the neighbors in this instance have all been remedied in past applications. This is all rehashing things that have been long settled. And any argument to the contrary just isn't the case. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a few additional questions. Why don't we proceed back to the podium again? And for the record, your name, address, and you raised your hand, yes. Since you're closest, why don't you go first? Your name and address, and then additional comments beyond what you had offered earlier this evening.
It's Sterns and 411 East Glen Ave, directly below the gazebo. I don't know if I can add to my comments, but because the previous people were talking about existing old clay lines that were going to do the sewage and then overflow was going to be conducted through that, like even just storm drains, not even, we're talking not even the sewage lines. Now that we know that there's going to be an easement for, that's a whole new system problem, in my opinion, because now we're talking about actual mechanical machines that are digging new lines and placing new pipes along the same pipes that are there. That's forest land, that's all woods. You have to take down trees, you have to get up past my property either from above or below to get right to that exact parallel line on a daily basis to make that pipeline, which I don't know how long it would take. But it certainly takes a lot of machinery in a steep grade like this to make a safe pipeline, new and parallel. I don't know, there's not enough information for me to really, I would never be able to make a decision not knowing how much trauma just putting the machinery in, let alone the pipe itself, to our neighborhood and the whole, the whole forest above us.
Mr. Camerota, you had additional comments to add as well?
I have a question about the lines. Excuse me, thank you very much. You say that you're running a parallel line. Where do those lines connect? They have no connection to the sewer system?
Oh, again, for the record, your name and-
Oh, yes. John Camerota, and I reside at 4016 East Glen Ave. And my question, my question concerns the, this new, the new lines that are being run. And she indicates that there are parallel lines, but she has to tap into some existing system to outlet those lines. Either are you planning to run new lines all the way down East Glen Ave? To South Salina?
Why don't you put the question out there? And then instead of having the back and forth, then we'll have them come up to the-
Okay.
-microphone and provide their answer so that can be recorded as well.
That, that's fine.
If you get your concerns out additionally beyond what you had before, then we can ask them to return, okay?
Okay, thank you. That, that's a major concern because there may be existing inert lines up there, but they all tap into the East Glen Ave line. And if they're not tapping into the existing eight-inch line, that means they have to be running new lines all the way down the street, which creates another, another problem. One of which is I, I have property there, and it's, it's private property. So they would be actually probably trespassing over private property. As to Mr. Brennan's comments, that these are settled issues, they've never been settled. Perhaps to him, his law firm has benefited from Loretto over the years. And it's, it's, it's not, not accurate. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right, just reporting some information to the chair. We, I know we are considering this as companion pieces, but I know we would also have a point where we could discuss as the evening goes on, whether we're proceeding jointly with these or if we want to proceed separately, right? And, and just now the speakers, I think, are coming back to issues that have covered before. I just think in the interest of fairness to everybody, we want to remind them of that, that we're looking at a, the subdivision first, and then they have the new business issue, which we could consider separately.
Right. So this, I think, is probably the last speaker before we return to the applicant, and then we'll probably move on.
A point of, a point of clarification. Kathy Stribley, 316 Monticello Drive, North. I was, I got down to see these plans today, and I was trying to sort through what was happening as well. And if what the applicant is saying is they're going to build a new line, and this is what I, across the back of this parking lot, this is a wooded area, and it starts to go down. I, across the back of this parking lot, this is a wooded area, and it starts to go down. So you're really going, almost going downhill there, and so what my neighbor is saying lives downhill from there, and I don't know what they're planning on doing. This is a wetland area, it's called the Glen because it's a glen. There's springs coming out of here, and the headwaters of City Line Brook, which come down through her yard, and then down into the city line, down into Bailey Plaza, and then down on Creek. So this would impact the slope area downhill, all the slope area downhill, and I don't know if they're impacting this Glen area or not, but it is, it is a wetland, and it is protected, and it is, DEC has been up there many times, they didn't know it was there, we've taken them up there, they do know it's there. So I would, I think we need some clarification on what's going on here. Anyway.
There's no wetlands. There is no New York State order.
Would you please use the microphone and provide your name?
Simply incorrect statement on Ms. Stribbly's part. She may call something wetlands. She may call something, please forgive me. She may call something wetlands. New York State does not recognize that. The United States Army Corps of Engineers does not recognize that. It is simply not the case.
Try a building through there, and you'll find out.
You have the opportunity for additional clarification for the most recent comments. If you wish to take advantage of that opportunity, you're welcome to do so now.
All right. So our plans show that sanitary sewer easement, what I heard was, where are we connecting that sanitary sewer easement, or sanitary sewer to? We are connecting into the East Glen Ave system. We have vetted the plans with the Syracuse sanitary sewer. They have had a chance to look at this and provide comment and feedback. We do understand there is going to be some issues with constructability, you know, but at the same time, if we decide to do a force main to make that same connection, we're still going to be requiring a 20-foot-wide easement. Maybe less disturbance, but we're still looking tonight for the overall subdivision parcel request and approval of the easements that we're showing to date.
Are the easements separate from the subdivision, though?
On the east-
I'm asking staff, sir.
I'm sorry.
Well, they're shown on the subdivision map, because we've had several meetings with city department heads, including Water, who had concerns about some of these, I'm not going to speak intelligently about it, because I don't know enough, it's not my bailiwick, but-
Access, right, how the lack of access to water.
Yeah, it's because you're separating the buildings, and you can't feed off of, through another building.
Right.
I think, and because of the re-subdivision now, it's not one lot anymore, so you're going across lot lines. I was not aware of new sewers going underground, because that simply doesn't show on a site plan. But I do know that the Water Department requested that they put easements on, but access easements was my understanding. So maybe if you can clarify that, because I'm not as, I can't speak that intelligently about it.
And I will do my best. So yes, the Water Department did request us to clear up the easements up here along Brighton Ave, because it's public all the way over, all the way over the bridge to the meter. And we're proposing our separate lines and meter to be adjacent to the existing. So the city wanted to see an easement so that they could come on and access any valves, any lines, if needed, on a Loretto parcel. We then have another easement that brings our dedicated lines to our facility here. The proposed sanitary sewer easement has been shown the whole time. This has always, this has been since when we came to meet with pre-development. To date, we've had no concerns with the city in this, making this proposed layout and connection. They have looked at this, and, you know, that's where we are to date.
You might add, the easements are from one corporate entity of Loretto to another. They're not public easements, except for the easement that grants the city access to the water meter kit. Otherwise, the easements are simply because, all the property is owned by Loretto, but it has different mortgages on different pieces, and the easements are simply from one Loretto entity to another, so that there is a, what would you say, so the city is comfortable that there is legal utility service to each building individually.
So my question to staff is, if you look at the new parcel, you're providing a public easement to the city to access that piece of, right down, no, down at the other corner. I'm sorry, I go to the new parcel, right there. So there's an easement, right, that little, that little piece?
This piece?
It's a public easement, so the city can get in there to access the new sanitary line, right?
No. My understanding is that this is an easement between Fahey and the Heritage for this line, because our line is now coming out the backside of the building and crossing over new lot 1A, over the Fahey residence, and down connecting into the public main.
I just have to give you a different site map, I'm trying, I can't see there.
Can you only bring, I have a-
Nope, nope, I'll find it in here somewhere. Just give me a second. So-
I say this one's helpful, too, because it's in color.
Oh, so I see. So again, going back to what I just said a minute ago, if we were to approve the subdivision, which is Lot 1B, the easements fall outside of that and on adjacent parcels owned by Loretto. So in approving the lot, we are not necessarily approving this easement, that's part of the new business item.
Well, you're approving the map. In essence, you are approving a map that is to be filed at the county clerk's office. So whatever's on that map is the legal subdivision of land and all of its things that go with it.
So Lot 1A and Lot 1B, 1A does have a piece of the easement on it, so that would be part of the subdivision. But all this, but the majority of what happens over here is not part of the two lots we're talking about. That would come under the new business item, wouldn't it?
Well, it is indirectly related, because it's going over there.
Well, it's sort of a butt for.
Um, I mean, unless the site plan for the new business item shows these things.
No, I've got my answer.
Do you know what I mean?
No, no, I've got my answer. It's, part of it's procedural, part of it's not. So if we approve the subdivision, we're curving this, which means when we get to the zoning question, we could, it'd be dumb to deny that.
Finished your additional clarifications, okay.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. I thank all the individuals who spoke for or against the project for sharing your views. And now we will declare this hearing closed and move to our next application, please.
One or two hearings.
There was no hearing, the second one, that's the whole problem.
No, our next.
The new business item doesn't-
Item.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Just review.
That's right.
So the next public hearing is R 1847. This is a re-subdivision to combine two properties into one new lot at 337 and 339 Richmond Ave. The Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation is the owner and the applicant for both properties, and they both lie within a residential Class A zoning district.
Here I am. Good evening. Mine are going to be easy. I'm Terry Luckett, from representing the Greater Syracuse Land Bank, 431 East Fayette Street. 339 Richmond Ave is a vacant single-family dwelling that was seized, seized for back taxes and transferred to the Land Bank in January of 2016. 337 Richmond Ave is a vacant, non-buildable lot that measures 33 feet wide. It was transferred to the Land Bank in July of 2018. Our strategy is to list the property for sale, for renovation, for a buyer, to purchase it and renovate it in a year's time. The re-subdivision provides the new potential owner of the property with defensible space, improves the likelihood that the property will sell and return to the tax rolls.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No additional speakers, so we'll declare this hearing closed, move to our next one.
Terry, I'll have you stay there, and I'll stay here to streamline this a little bit. So R 1850 is a re-subdivision to combine two properties into one new lot, 302 and 304 West Beard Ave. The Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation is the owner and the applicant, and both properties lie within a residential Class AA zoning district.
Terry Luckett, again, Greater Syracuse Land Bank, 431 East Fayette Street. 304 West Beard Ave was acquired by the Land Bank in December of 2015. The building at 302 West Beard was demolished by the Land Bank just this September. The assessor's records show 304 West Beard as a single-family structure, but it's actually configured as a two-family. It has 2,300 square feet of living space. Since the zone is RAA and allows two-family, our strategy for returning the property to productive use is to apply for a change in occupancy, which we have, and to renovate it as a two-family dwelling. We're going to sell it to a nearby neighbor, and that deal has been, is in the works as a rental property. However, if we were to install the required parking at the rear of 304, a variance would be needed to waive the lot coverage requirements, and the re-subdivision of 302 West Beard Ave solves that problem. I could go on and talk about how it's not likely that the vacant lot will be used for infill construction, because there's many, many-
You attached your earlier position on that. Was that in this application or the previous one?
Yes, it's the same strategy.
Okay.
So-
Okay, so questions for-
So 304 was demolished?
302 was demolished. 304 is going to be rehabbed.
Is that 302?
Yes.
And so 304 is to the west?
Yes.
Okay. So say what you said again about this, something about this lot would provide parking for that, the new?
Well, 304 is going to be rehabbed as a two-family.
Okay.
If we put the required parking in the back of just 304, we would exceed the lot coverage.
Ah, okay. Got it now.
So adding the extra land-
Got it.
Solves that.
There is a proposed site plan in your report.
The applicant still at the podium? Additional questions?
No, wait. So this shows the parking is on the side lot, then?
Yes.
Doesn't show it behind the house?
I was saying, if I were to put it behind the house without a subdivision, then we would exceed lot coverage.
But if you put it behind the house, instead of up by the front, instead of putting it essentially where the house used to be, if it was behind the house, you could still have all the yard on the side, is what I'm saying, as opposed to-
Might actually push that back, because we're afraid of settling. So that actually might get pushed back further.
So that was the concern that arose, that came to mind, is using the side, using the former house site as a parking lot, as opposed to putting the parking behind, and then all of that could just be the yard for this house?
That, it might work out that way, Chris.
Of course, there's nothing I can say about that, because it's a re-subdivision. Okay, done.
Other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the front. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward. No other speakers, so we'll declare-
Wait, wait, I have another question. I'm not going to give up on this yet. So in this zoning classification, to put parking in that location, as the drawing currently shows, does that require approval by anybody? Can it just be done by right?
Well, they would need a permit, and it would be routed around to different departments, and our department would look at it, and if you would like to encourage on the record a different configuration, we can certainly work with-
So encouraged.
-them to mitigate any adverse-
It's my understanding that as long as it's behind the front setback, it's okay, but I get what you're saying.
I would like it behind the house, like all the other houses on the street, where they have garages and parking, as opposed to where there used to be a building. I mean, that's what I'm encouraging.
So you, it's a two-family proposed?
Yes.
So you need only two, two parking spaces are required, so there are more proposed and are required.
The owner wanted more.
But we can certainly work with, because you haven't sold this yet, you're-
No, it's in the works, it's being rehabbed.
Again, there's no objection to the number of spaces, if you want more than was required. It's thinking about the building line on the street, and it's one thing that this is going to be 100-foot-wide frontage, which is an anomaly, except for one corner lot, at least, when I was just looking. So rather than put parking in the anomaly, if it was green space, I think that's more consistent with the character of the neighborhood. So my recommendation would be to put the parking behind the existing house and use the new side yard as the yard for this property. That's a recommendation, obviously, so.
I agree with you.
Okay, other questions, thoughts, recommendations? Okay. I lost track of my place here.
You were declaring the hearing closed when Chris made comments.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you for getting me back on track. All right. Next hearing, please.
You should declare it closed again.
We'll declare this hearing closed and move to our next one, which I think involves the same players.
All right. The next public hearing is R 1851. This is also a re-subdivision to combine three properties into one new lot at 128 to 130, 134 and 138 Baker Ave. Denise Welch and the Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation are the owners and applicants, and these properties all lie within a residential Class AA zoning district.
Terry Luckett, Greater Syracuse Land Bank, 431 East Fayette Street. 138 Baker Ave is a single-family home owned by Denise Welch. The home was sold to Ms. Welch in 2017 by Home Headquarters, which purchased the property from the Land Bank in 2016. This property was previously combined with 134 Baker Ave. 128-30 Baker Ave is the vacant lot next door. It's irregularly shaped and measures approximately 45 feet times 126 feet. It was transferred It was transferred to the land bank in August of 2018. This re-subdivision is a difficult decision for us at the land bank. In a more robust housing market, it would make the most sense to sell the lot for new construction infill. The land bank currently owns 228 residential building lots and 227 non-buildable lots. Many of these can be assembled for large infill sites, but many buildable lots, including 128-30 Baker, are not likely places for new construction in the next 20 to 30 years. It's not realistic for us to hold this lot in the hopes that it will support infill development. Until the housing market improves, we feel this vacant lot will require interim stewardship, and the neighbors are the best suited to perform that.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commission members?
There's a 17-foot-wide driveway.
We're aware of that, and we will take care of it by narrowing it to 12 feet up to the front setback. Denise Welch is here, too, if you have any questions.
Okay, I think we're set with questions up here. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. So, no additional speakers. We'll declare this hearing closed and move on to our next hearing.
Next public hearing is 3S-1825. This is a three-mile limit review in the town of DeWitt. This is to realign two properties into two new lots. The Dunavilla Track Subdivision, 6881 to 6883 East Genesee Street, and the owner is Adrian Dunavilla.
The applicant is here. Please come forward to provide your name, address, and a summary of the proposal. No applicant. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward. No speakers of any kind. The application is complete. I take it. So, we'll declare this hearing closed and move to, I think, what might be our final hearing for this evening.
Yes, the last public hearing is 3S-1826. This is also a three-mile limit subdivision review. This is in the town of Salina. This is to combine seven parcels into one new lot at 103 and 111 Luther Avenue, and 113 and 117 Old Seventh North Street. UniFirst, yes, UniFirst Corporation is the owner and applicant.
Thank you. If the applicant is here, please come forward and provide your name and address and a summary of the application. Thank you.
Hi, Vincent Ryan, on behalf of UniFirst Corporation from Keppel &amp; Freeman Associates, 6320 Fly Road. It's a three-acre site. There's currently five buildings that are being demolished. One building will be reconstructed, and the process is for a three-mile subdivision, going from the seven current lots that they, that exist to one conducive lot.
Okay, questions? That was very concise. Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the front of the room. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No additional speakers. We'll declare this hearing closed. Thank you very much. Typically, we would, now that our public hearing schedule for the evening is completed, we would go back to the beginning of the list and try to find consensus and action on each of the items heard and closed tonight. We will still try to do that, but before we do that, I'd like to take one item out of order, if we might, which is the next item of business, which is under the classification of minor modification. I think it perhaps is just that, and so that the two representatives aren't with us for the whole rest of the evening, not that we would object to that, but it might be possible to dispense with this item fairly quickly. So, let's see, give it a try and see what happens, if you would, please.
Okay, so, this is a minor modification to SP-1618M3. This is a special permit modification to a restaurant to modify the floor plan at 1200 to 1224 East Genesee Street. The applicant is requesting to modify the floor plan to customize this for an incoming tenant, and what they're doing is, if you recall, the special permit is only on the office Class B portion of the property. It's a split zoning parcel, and you last approved this on November of 2016. Now, this included customer area of 1,865 square feet. Part of it was indoors, and this proposal reduces the interior customer area to 510 square feet inside. It was 530. What they're doing is removing the bathrooms and locating them in a central corridor for use of other patrons within the building, and therefore rearranging some things. You have purview over special permit changes, and so that's why this is before you as a minor modification.
Thank you. Well, I don't think you were hearing objections, so...
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Any abstentions? This minor modification is approved. Sorry, we didn't get to hear your presentation.
Trying to save you money.
You'd like, you could leave the notes if you'd like.
You could certainly stay.
Thank... Thank you both very much.
Okay, here we go.
It was indeed simple and straightforward. So, now we return to the hearings that were heard earlier this evening, and I... We left it open, so we can begin at the top. Well, the first one is, we indicated, on hold, where we didn't have complete information, so... And there were no speakers for that one anyways. That brings us to the re-subdivision application for Emerson and Willis, R-18-43. And you need to follow later on. Not long. Is there motion on the re-subdivision application?
Move approval with a negative declaration?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The re-subdivision is approved. Now, we move to the project site review for PR-18-32 at the same location. This one is more involved.
This says no waivers, correct? Okay, no.
If I could ask staff a question. When what I would consider collateral matters are raised, when someone says, not the applicant, but someone associated with the applicant had a number of problems, is the commission allowed to look into those other issues? Are we allowed to ask the office to examine the other issues? Because what we have here is an applicant who's related to someone who may have had a prior history with a similar property.
Okay, so, project site review, the whole purpose is design. It is, how is the building designed? What are the alterations that happened to this building on the site and the facade? Well, here, they painted it green, and they are proposing to make some alterations. As a result of that, we refer this out to other departments who commented on that. One of the items of discussion very heavily tonight was DPW Transportation Planner's comments. So, that is what we are looking at tonight, and that is what is the purview of the board. It is an industrial Class A zoning district. It's a retail proposal that is allowed by right. If they weren't re-subdividing or making any changes to the property, the commission wouldn't see the proposal at all. Zoning does not control behavior, quality of product, or operator. You know, we just, the police control those kinds of things. So, as far as the zoning perspective, we can look at the impacts on traffic, pedestrian safety, facade alterations, color, materials. And I don't think they proposed any signage, but signage could be also something. So, to answer your question, the long way, through a project site review, no.
So, our, for the record, our purpose is merely, once we've done what we should do with the subdivision issue, the site plan is all we look at here.
And the facade alterations. So, they did change the color of the building to green, and I think they're changing an overhead door to a man door. So, those things are what is under consideration with respect to this application.
Are there any questions in this application that might go for review to the comm council?
I don't think there's any encroachments, and that would be the only thing I can think of that the comm council would have a review of.
Thank you. And for the record, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the motion for the record, recognizing we've spent several nights on this and had this on hold a couple of times. So, I'll move approval with a negative declaration.
Is there a second?
A second, Dave.
Any discussion?
Would you consider modifying your proposal so that all of the city transportation engineers' recommendations were met? Which have to do with the width of the driveway, the screening, curbing for the areas that will be paved, and that they should be paved, not be gravel?
I'll take a step back, take that friendly amendment, and say, acknowledging that there are transportation notes that were extensive in our packet, and also make it clear that we know no one entity, no one department can waive what we waive. I'll make that criticism too, and then move approval with a negative declaration.
Motion with a friendly amendment, or adjusted with a friendly amendment, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So, with the conditions noted, the project site review is approved. Next, we're at SP-18-22, the West Fayette Street site for the special permit for the amusement and recreation facility.
I would move approval with a negative declaration on the condition that the previous conditions regarding the sidewalk from the public right-of-way to the main entrance be implemented.
Second.
Discussion. Were there waivers on this one?
No.
No waivers, okay. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? This special permit is approved. That takes us to the Burnett Avenue Project, SP-18-23, for the restaurant in the 3,400 block of Burnett. This one does have a number of waivers. Is there a motion on this? Some of these waivers from our original material have been eliminated, I believe, in the discussion this evening. Four, I thought, five, six, seven...
I'll go for the easiest one. I think the ground sign issue was resolved because they're, by taking the name of the deli off the sign, it reduced the size of the square foot...
But is...
Size of the grounds.
But is the remaining ground size, would the remaining ground sign still be larger, because it's double-sided?
Yes, and I think we came to 11 square feet.
Yeah, and because it's in the right-of-way, you can't waive anything. So, it would need to be on private property in order for you to waive that. So, they could, you could propose or suggest that they move the ground, the ground sign proposed in the right-of-way on private property and make any suggestions with respect to the size as well.
My notes said that the 154 required, 115 were provided, but I'm not sure that those...
I think we shrunk those number, that number even further with that section F, at least until there's clarification on that section F.
Remember G was? Remember G was?
G was the one.
G was, sorry. Lost some places. A, B, C, D, E, F. Yeah, I don't know where G is.
So, we take 17 out of the 132. 115, okay. The numbers I cited in the, your staff report did not include the 17 for G, because I did not see them, so I did not count them.
Thank you.
Radical.
I did not see with my little eyes.
15, requested for the waiver still stands, in light of what we heard tonight. Okay, thank you. I think we still have a waiver needed for...
The material.
That's, yeah, that doesn't change.
Yes. But we took care of the curbing?
No, the curbing, the parking lot still does not get curbing. So, it's a waiver. Basically, we still need all the waivers? Yes? Even with the new plan?
Yes, items sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-one still stand as deviations.
Wait, did you say, you didn't say nineteen? We resolved nineteen, did you say?
No, nineteen, Mr. Pitcher stated during the public hearing that they would...
Do what they needed to do.
Remove the restaurant and either remove the sign or reduce the sign to no more than nine square feet as a directional sign.
And then the remaining, the other ground sign falls within allowable sizes? Okay.
Well, the other ground sign is in the right-of-way.
And that goes back to, yeah, okay.
So if that's over and above forty square feet...
Okay. Okay. We still have that, yeah. Let's go to the comm council, right?
And the island solution is a step up from what it is now. Oh, I am too confused about all the waivers.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with a negative declaration, but I need to walk through all of the waivers to make sure I understand what we're talking about here. So number sixteen is the waiver for the parking spaces. And I am proposing approving that in light of the fact that one of the major retail spaces is not functioning. And I understand that the special permit goes with that restaurant, but it could be a dry cleaning establishment and we'll grapple with that in the future. Granting the waiver that talks about the distance from the driveways to the property line, that's a pre-existing condition. Curbs provided on the edges, blah, 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 blah. I'm gonna skip eighteen for a minute. Nineteen, we're all set with, the sign one, correct? We, nope, oh my gosh. Why am I having an issue with the sign thing tonight?
If the, if the, if the sign were on private property, you could waive it.
Right, so I'm saying I can't grant that waiver.
Right, so would that, either you can offer a suggestion that they move it...
Okay.
And reduce it, or not grant it and then they couldn't have it.
We can't grant it because it's in the, in the right-of-way.
Yes.
So then the recommend, so not granting that waiver, but making the recommendation that it be moved onto the property and fall within the design requirements of the sign ordinance? Okay. And twenty is minimum of eight feet. So they provided screening, but it's not eight feet in width, correct?
Correct.
So granting that waiver. And then the sidewalks are also not? Nope.
They, they...
Now they show that, they show that. So I can ignore that one, so then I just have to go back to eighteen, which is the curbing at the rear of the property around all of the parking. And not granting that and putting the curbing in. I think I got them all.
Do you intend to include the material sent back?
Oh, what number was that one?
Twenty-one.
Oh, yep, yes, and granting that. Okay.
Is that clear which waivers are in and which are not in for this motion? And there's a motion. Fact, is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So that special permit is approved. Now move to R-18-46, the proposed re-subdivision for the Loretto project on Fillmore Ave. Be fine with me, a suggestion to pause on this and move on to the...
Yes.
Next, okay, we'll return to that one momentarily. We have our next one, which is the re-subdivision on Richmond Ave, R-18-47. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Our next re-subdivision is R-18-50, the project on West Beard Avenue. Is there a motion on this?
Move to approve with a negative declaration, noting that staff take the previous comments into consideration when consulted about the parking.
The location of the parking.
Yep.
So noted, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That re-subdivision is approved. We have yet another re-subdivision, R-18-51, the project on Baker Avenue. Is there a motion on this?
I move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? That re-subdivision is approved. Our first three-mile limit is 3S-18-25 tonight in the town of DeWitt. Is there a motion on this?
Move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Our last three-mile limit is 3S-18-26 in the town of Salina. Is there a motion on this?
Move approval with a negative declaration.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? That three-mile limit subdivision is approved. Cycle back to R-18-46. This is the re-subdivision for the Loretto project.
I have a process question regarding the companion piece under new business. There was concern by many people who came to the podium about having a public hearing for this. Could you just explain whether or not that's possible and when it is?
It is possible. If I can just find the place. It is under the discretion of the commission to hold a public hearing on a project plan or not. So you're welcome to authorize a hearing for it. But if you want me to read the direct rules and regulations, I will. I'm good.
I trust you that you're not...
Okay, I, if you want me to read this, I can read it. So, prior to the issuance of any building permit for the construction of any new structure or parking or access facilities in the zone, a project plan for the facility to be constructed must be submitted to the city planning commission for its review and approval. The commission must also find that the project plan is in substantial conformus with the district plan, that it makes adequate provision for fire and police access, drainage and utilities, and then it meets other applicable regulations within its jurisdiction. The commission may call a public hearing on project plans at its discretion.
Thank you.
So do we need a motion to have a public hearing on that?
We should, on that one, we should have a motion, if we wanna do that when we get to that one, we should probably first...
With this one, I think, well, you don't have our attorney here with staff tonight, but it seems like a situation we've had in the past where perhaps more information would be helpful before we actually vote on this issue. And maybe a motion to reopen it so we could continue the hearing would be appropriate. So I would move to reopen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Abstention? So we'll reopen the re-subdivision hearing, R-18-46. And when the law department representative is here, we can present additional questions or points needed for clarification. Take that into account before making a decision, final decision on that re-subdivision application. Is that the plan? Okay. So now, our modification was approved, we're now moving to the new business, which is the project plan review. We heard extensive comments tonight, both from the presentations of the presentation, comments against, and clarification regarding those comments made against. Lots of speakers tonight on this one. Is there consensus on the commission for moving this forward in one manner or another?
I think in light of the concerns expressed by members of the public for a public hearing that we should have a public hearing.
I agree.
So we should go on record to that.
Do we need a motion or just...
I think a motion would be in order.
Second.
Discussion, the motion to authorize a public hearing for this project plan review. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So we will authorize a hearing to that. And would that be in our next meeting or in consultation with the applicant to know when additional materials might need to be compiled to present at a public hearing?
Would you give some guidance as to what additional materials you would like to see so that I can communicate that to the applicant if they need to revise anything or provide more information? Or to other city departments? For instance, perhaps the water department or engineering department?
Well, clearly, there's a concern about whether or not the project will have an impact on existing sanitary resources that are available, facilities. So I think we need more detailed information from the applicant in terms of how they assessed what the project will generate and how that relates to what the existing system can accommodate. And I think we also have to have an understanding of, from a construction perspective, what the impacts of constructing that will have on the environment.
And the neighborhood.
And the neighborhood. There definitely seem to be two separate opinions about whether or not there were designated wetlands. It'd be good if we could get a definitive response from the state agency that does that.
Okay.
And we did not ask, but at this point, we don't need to now, but the issue of snow removal, I think would probably be something we'd want to have the applicant be able to address at a public hearing.
Removal or storage or both?
Well, removal slash storage. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Are there other issues or topics that we can identify now to ask the applicant to prepare for?
Those are the major ones.
I think the only thing I wanna add is just that since we're talking about the easement and we're talking about the drainage issue, the piece about the utility, the fact that the, the city department would need to have, I think they called it a closet, but to have that access.
Right.
I think just fitting all those pieces together would help us. The water department has to have access somewhere in the property, somewhere in the building.
I think it was up in the northwest corner of the, northeast corner of the site.
Well, from my understanding, it's that the, it's not that the water department has to have access, but it's that the, they're crossing underneath property lines. So that has to be granted because they're gonna be different property.
That would be like if your neighbor wanted to put a sewer across your lawn. But, but there is an issue about, I think it was up in the northeast corner, which has less impact on anything.
I think it's just the water department addressing, do they need to have something on the property?
Right. Just have them review that again. I think of particular concern is gonna be the construction of this and the impact that will happen during construction and obviously subsequent to, but...
I'm wondering if you, if we don't have comments in here on that new business item, if you'd like me to get comments from...
Yes.
The water department and engineering about that subsurface thing and stuff? Because I know that will be handled when building permits are pulled and we won't necessarily, we might not see that. But they, those two departments are likely to be involved and consulted. So maybe I can, I don't know if I need more detailed information from the applicant, but at least maybe have a mini-meeting with DPW and engineering to see, not DPW, sorry, engineering and water to, to address these very specific things. Is that, is that...
Well, clearly, if we have a public hearing, the questions are gonna be raised by the public in addition to the members of the commission.
And it would be helpful to have any of those things addressed or revised beforehand so that, because I know there are time constraints, as with all projects, and timeframes that you have to work with it.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a way forward on that one. I think with the exception of the 2019 schedule and the hearing authorizations for next month's meeting, first meeting, the, our agenda, or are there...
No.
Please say no.
But I would like to say that now you have sixteen public hearings for, well, your December meeting. Now, here's a, you originally had something scheduled for New Year's Eve, I believe, December 31st.
We should save all those for New Year's Eve, it's the only way to go out.
So we had proposed in this new schedule to start instead of that one, January 7th. But you could also add another meeting in December. I know it's a busy time for not only applicants, but also you all, so if you wanted to break up...
What'd you say?
Christmas Eve and stuff.
Instead of New Year's Eve, Christmas.
Thanks, Jeff.
So I'm just throwing options out there. So I'm just throwing options out there. Because the December tenth meeting, that, that is-
It's getting to be a really full agenda and, um, who knows where the complications might lie in some of these proposals, where there's gonna be some extended discussion um, and participation, so I think I'd be very open to adding another meeting in December to
Um, okay, let me see.
Pull off some, I mean, we don't have to necessarily decide tonight, but soon we'd probably need to figure that out.
Well, you should, you should because people are scheduling things and they wanna get on this or this agenda, so, um, if you, well, well, no, you couldn't, I mean, it would be Christmas Eve, it would be Christmas.
Well- Could there be a meeting between Christmas and New Year's?
Yes, the twenty-seventh or twenty, I don't know what day is the week.
Twenty-seventh is, is Thursday.
So it's twenty s-
This is Tuesday, so the twenty-sixth then.
It's in day.
Yes.
Possibly the only reasonable thing.
Or we could do something, um, the week after the tenth.
That doesn't-
I'm gonna have to do staff reports anyway.
Seventeenth?
You could have one on the tenth and one on the seventeenth. You could have one on the tenth and, and one on the, the thirteenth. Uh, you know, they don't have to necessarily be on a Monday.
So wait, so here's a question. So by having the two meetings, we're gonna go back to this list and split them?
Well, I'm, I'm just throwing out options.
Well-
I mean, you do have the authority over your own agenda and your own, or the discretion under the-
I, I guess I'm, this is where I'm going with this, if we're already gonna go back to this list and split it among dates, can some of these just wait to the seventh? Like some of the re-subdivisions. If there are land bank re-subdivisions, is it, with all due respect to those, those tend not to be projects where there's a construction project tied. There are not, there are applications that don't necessarily have a construction project tied to them, so would waiting to the seventh for any of those be a, a big, um, burden?
Well-
There are probably none, because I just said that.
Right.
And look at that, I don't think any of them are. Well, it was a good idea for the moment that I had it, none of them are. And you know what, this, yeah.
There's six re-subdivision and, well, five re-subdivisions and one three mile limit, so typically those take a shorter time, but I wouldn't wanna I wouldn't wanna make the decision of who, who stays and who goes.
Into line A and who goes into line B.
So, um,
but, but we're still saying we would do that anyway, it's just we would have the meeting so close together, somebody might not complain. Correct?
Could we have, are we at that, an earlier hour? And so, so-
Start at five.
And a break in the middle?
Intervention?
Intervention.
Guys. Yeah.
It takes me about forty-five minutes to lock the building and most of the centers come on at times.
Yeah, we, we trust it, we wanna go.
Trying.
We really wanna go. Um, actually, what about Rebecca's recommendation?
Fine.
And can we, could, could we take like a thirty-minute break so that we could?
So, so one or the rest of the year. I mean, this is, this is why we have that some new, etc. again, and see the following. And for us also, for Seager, because that's the whole reason.
I would just think that in light of the holiday, it might be easier if we just kill ourselves for one night. Because we're already committed to being here anyway.
I like the earlier-
Start time and a little breather somewhere halfway through the agenda or thereabouts.
And that actually probably is easier than trying to get another meeting, yeah. It might just be better to a little bit, take a longer time.
Bite the bullet and start an hour earlier.
Fortify ourselves with coffee and sugar.
I'll send the coffee.
Okay, so-
Especially it's not the last one on the list.
Uh, so if you do that, there'll be sixteen hearings, um, and we can start at five PM, so we'll, we'll try to make an extra effort to highlight that on all of our postcards and all the applicants, let them know that it does, it will start early.
Okay, so with that in mind.
And I have to check with the city clerk to make sure that the- available, yeah.
So, number two, the re-subdivision that involves Holly Avenue, if that's in the national registered district, somebody should be prepared to address it so we don't have to spend three hundred hours talking about that one. Just saying.
Okay.
Um,
See if there's any other- Some samples.
Okay, can you get that? Are you, um, rehearing the Loretto subdivision, or is that just on hold and you're hearing only the, um, new business item? The project plan review?
No, we reopen the re-subdivision hearing.
Okay.
Uh, to specifically get some input from the city's attorney.
Okay.
And auth, we authorized the hearing for the site review. So we have a plan for our last remaining meeting of the calendar year, to start earlier, keep the same date, add a little break somewhere in the middle, um, for survival purposes. So, that still has not addressed the two thousand nineteen calendar and we need to get word out soon about, or at least the first quarter of the year, so that people-
Do we, do we, do we need a motion though to approve those public hearings? Did we do that?
Yeah, you need a, a motion to authorize your hearings and, but do you wanna go to the calendar first?
Just following the order of the agenda.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I thought-
I'm so traditional.
We, we were standing, we were talking about it for so long, I thought we were doing that, sorry.
So-
I apologize.
So we made an adjustment to the start time for our next meeting, that doesn't require a motion, there's just consensus of the commission?
Yes.
Want something on record?
Um, I, I would put it on record just to be safe, um, you know.
Okay, so is there a motion, that do we settle on the time as five early enough, or four-thirty, or what's reasonable?
I would say five.
Five o'clock, or is there a motion today?
People are working, you wanna give them a chance to get here.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed say nay, any abstentions? So we have our, settled on earlier start time for the December tenth meeting. Now, the two thousand nineteen schedule, or as much of it as we want to commit to, to certainty right now, so people can plan for the meeting dates and they sync up with the council schedule as much as they can?
Yes, we have the county planning board schedule, the comm council schedule, and, um, the board zoning appeal schedule. We've tried to, over the years, make them so that if someone needs to go to multiple boards, they're going in a streamlined fashion.
Okay, good.
So this, this schedule, this is the board zoning appeal schedule I brought with me, it, it is in line with.
So we don't have it yet, the, our proposed schedule.
You do, it's the last page in your agenda.
Two fifty-nine.
Well, uh, wrong, did I?
No, no.
No, don't tell me I did not put that in the drop off.
I don't see it, and I, it's not, it's not, it's not at the agenda, because I printed the agenda, I got all the pages, so.
Wow.
I'm looking, my friend.
Highly desirable items, those two thousand nineteen schedules, people just snatch them up like you would.
Yes.
Right. And there are, okay. I will email it.
Okay, so there's only one
In February.
Date where we have to move to a Tuesday.
That's it, but this, we're gonna run into that again next year.
Yeah, yeah. We might do this, might do the same thing.
I would, I would recommend doing the same thing, there's the December thirtieth next year.
Not much better than New Year's Eve.
So maybe we just do one long meeting and-
Right, we just did that, we had started five o'clock.
And just advise them in November, not, not to agree to a big agenda item, big, big, big list anyway. So if in November we say, let's try to keep the December meeting down to X number, and then if we end up on the eighteenth of November next year, at, holding three open, we're not gonna be starting at sixteen and adding-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, maybe.
Get to see this, scan this quickly?
Yes.
They're all Monday meetings with the exception of February, because-
And Jeff is gonna send it so we can put it in our calendar.
So is there a motion to adopt this schedule for two thousand nineteen? Uh, second discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, abstentions? We have a sc, meeting scheduled for two thousand nineteen, I think that leaves us only with authorizations for the tenth of December for our mayor's meeting session. Is there a motion to authorize
Sixteen?
About lower hearings?
So moved.
Sixteen and counting, I guess.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay, abstentions? We have our authorizations for the tenth. Anything else come before the commission, or is there a motion to adjourn?
Please.
So moved.
So moved, whatever, second, whatever we need.
Favor, say aye, aye, opposed, say nay, we are adjourned until five o'clock on the tenth. On behalf of the-